Good morning. I see eight of our 11 members are present here in person. Member Ida Rodriguez is en route, and I understand that President Darling Hammond and Member McQuillan are participating in this meeting from remote locations. President Darling Hammond, consistent with recent changes in the laws governing our meetings, I must ask you the following: Would you confirm that you are present?
Yes, I am.
Would you confirm that there is nobody in the room you are participating from remotely?
That is true.
Thank you very much. And we also have Member McQuillan joining us remotely. Member McQuillan, consistent with recent changes in the laws governing our meetings, I must also ask you the following: Would you confirm that you are present?
Yes, I'm present. Good morning.
Good morning. Would you confirm that there is no one in the room with you where you are participating from remotely?
Yes, I'm alone in my office with the door closed and locked.
Thank you, Member McQuillan. Now, seeing that Member McQuillan's door is locked and all members are now present, I hereby call the May 2024 meeting of the State Board of Education to order at 8:32 a.m. I'd like to commence with the salute to the flag, and Member Orozco Gonzalez will lead us today. Would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. First, I'd like to welcome board members and staff and members of the public who are attending this board meeting in person. I will briefly turn to President Darling Hammond for some remarks regarding today's meeting. President Darling Hammond?
Are you thinking of the President's report?
I don't believe so, President Darling Hammond. I think it's around the fact that you're participating remotely and who will be chairing today.
Oh, guess what? You're chairing today. And I'll just say, I'm sorry not to be there in person. I am recovering from illness and not yet in shape to travel and be safely with others, but I'm really glad that technology allows me to be with you virtually and that you will be chairing the meeting. Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you, President Darling Hammond. Thank you so very much. We would like to let you know that there are two items on the agenda that have addenda. For Item One, the SBE Screening Committee's Recommendations for Appointments to the California Practitioners Advisory Group, also known as CPAG. And also Item Four, the California Reading Difficulties Risk Screener Selection Panel rubric. The proposed waiver consent items will be W1 through W6, and the proposed regular consent items are Items 5 through 8. We will reopen Item One this afternoon to take action on the preliminary report of actions, the draft of the March 2024 Meeting Minutes, taking up the SBE Screening Committee's Recommendations for Appointments to the California Practitioners Advisory Group, and to also report on our liaison assignments. For our public, we're so excited that you have joined us today, and we want you to know that public comment will be accepted either in person or by phone. Members of the public wishing to call in for public comment should view the live stream of the meeting to know at what time public comment will occur for each item. Public comment may be provided by dialing the phone number, entering a participant access code, and then following each of the operator's prompts. Upon dialing in, callers will be added to the caller queue. The operator will notify callers when it is their turn to provide public comment. We will also ask callers to please turn down their speaker volume of their computers if they are following the live webcasts to avoid an echoing effect. We also welcome members of the public who wish to provide public comment in person. For those members, please sign in using the binder at the table just outside the room. The binder is on the table with separate pages for each item number. This will help ensure that the staff is able to track the in-person speakers for a particular item. Public comment will be limited to one minute for each speaker, and where speakers require interpretation, two minutes will be provided. Item 11 is the general public comment item during which members of the public may provide comment on matters that are not specifically listed on the board's agenda. At this time, we are going to take up closed session to discuss and/or take action on the following legal matters: MSC versus the state and Mark S. versus the state. We are hereby adjourning to closed session at 8:36, and we would like to ask the public to please leave the room at this time, as board members will be adjourning upstairs into closed session. Thank you very much. Just would like to let you know in closed session, the board discussed and took action on the following legal matters: MSC versus the state and Mark S. versus the state. I will now reopen Item One and turn it over to State Superintendent Thurmond to provide his report. State Superintendent Thurmond?
Good morning, board members, Madam Chair. Thank you all for being here today. I'd like to open by just acknowledging that we are celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week and want to thank all of the teachers all across the state, all across the country, for all you do for our students. I had the opportunity to start the week by visiting a school district, the Santa Ana Unified School District, where there was a very kind and special teacher appreciation event, and was honored to have the chance to serve breakfast and to regale with the teachers and the administrators and the parents who came out to provide their thanks and appreciation for our teachers and all that they do for our students. It was a great week, and so let us all show our appreciation to our teachers. And then we know that we'll also be celebrating classified employees shortly. We thank all of our educators. I want to open by also acknowledging that just a few days ago, we celebrated the California Distinguished Schools Award. More than 400 schools represented. Thank you, Board Member Orozco Gonzalez, for your participation. 1,200 educators in the room celebrating the accomplishments of our schools to close the achievement gap, to bring rigor and support for all of our students. Having said that, Madam Chair, I'd like to ask if we can take a moment of silence for former State Superintendent Delane Easton, who recently passed away. Many of you know her. She is the only woman to ever have served in this office. She championed incredible things like early education, and she actually created something that we celebrate to this day, and that is the Teacher of the Year Award and Ceremony. She was a great legislator. She championed computer science and other STEAM-related efforts, and she will be missed. And we are organizing a memorial here at the department in her honor, and we will make sure that everyone in the CDE and state board community are invited to have the opportunity to commemorate and celebrate the life of former Superintendent Delane Easton. And with the permission of the Chair and the board, if we could take a moment of silence in recognition of her life. Thank you very much for that moment. We will be sure to provide details about the ceremony that will take place here in honor of Superintendent Delane Easton. Continuing with the awards, I want to share that we recently honored three outstanding math and science teachers for the 2024 Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. Many of you know that this year, we are promoting the idea of providing professional development to more than 300,000 educators in the areas of math and for those who teach our kids to read. And so we congratulate our teachers who were recognized for math and science excellence, and we hope that we can continue that tradition of excellence in supporting our students. Also want to share that last month, we had a conversation about apprenticeship training programs. We recognize that in this state, we promote both college and career opportunities, and that many of our students may enter into career technical programs or other pathways in apprenticeship, whether it be in construction or in the fire service, and we want to make sure that those messages get out. So we sent a letter to every school district in the state, reminding them to remind their students about the opportunities that exist in apprenticeship. And we had members from California's Apprenticeship Council serve on a summit discussion about how we make apprenticeship opportunities available for our students. And so we're grateful to all of you. I'm also mindful that on today, this board will be taking up the item of community schools' funding, and we are in full support of the approval of the Cohort III's implementation grantees as part of the California Community Schools Partnership Program. There'll be more about that program in just a bit. This board will also be taking action to approve literacy screeners. Many of you know that I sent a letter in support of the literacy, the dyslexia screening bill that ultimately was funded in the mid-year revise, so that we can make sure that students who have difficulties in reading are able to be supported early on, that that will be recognized. And so we support that item that will be before the board today. We know that many who have not learned to read, including those who are incarcerated, could have been supported but for screening, for difficulty, and for dyslexia, and that is a paradigm that we must change. We must ensure that all of our students learn to read by third grade, and a big part of that work is making sure that we provide early recognition of those who may have difficulties and need additional support. I would also just finally say that we recognize our California Green Ribbon Schools, more than 20 schools that have demonstrated that they are green achievers, that they are focused on the environment and teaching our students on how to be stewards of the environment. And in April, we recognized 44 schools that were designated as Purple Star Schools. These are the schools that serve our military families. We thank those military families for their service members and their contributions. We also remind them that we want you to, if you have a spouse or a partner who is a teacher from another state, we recognize you to become a teacher in the state of California, and we offer you a credential of $20,000 should you need that. I should say, Madam Chair, finally, that there were 31 schools also recognized as Model Continuation High Schools for 2024. These are the schools that provide comprehensive service for what I will call "appromise" youth who may need additional opportunities but have great potential. And with that, Madam Chair, this concludes my report. I submit myself to any questions from you or the board.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Thurmond, and thank you for sharing those great celebrations that are happening throughout our state. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to President Darling Hammond to provide her report.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Superintendent Thurmond. It is hard to believe it's really May, especially when considering just last month, we had districts in our state who were experiencing snow and heavy rain causing school closures in several counties. And as we continue to experience these unusual climate events, we're also making enormous headway in California on climate safety. As Superintendent Thurmond noted, California schools were included in those recently named by the U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon Schools, which includes Pacific Ridge School in Carlsbad and Chabuco Elementary in Chabuco. We also had three districts who were honored as District Sustainability Awardees, including Claremont Unified School District, Rio School District in Oxnard, and Cabrillo Unified School District in Half Moon Bay. And these awards recognize schools and districts that save energy, reduce costs, feature environmentally sustainable learning spaces, protect health, foster wellness, and offer environmental education. And their efforts really contribute to us all, and we're grateful to them, and we congratulate them. May is also the month where we learn a little bit more about the state's financial projections and how that impacts the proposed budget for the coming fiscal year. Governor Newsom will be releasing his May budget revision within the next week, and I'm sure we'll all be keeping a close eye on that announcement. Overall, there is much to be grateful for in Governor Newsom's proposed budget this year. The state faces a significant revenue shortfall, which requires difficult choices, but the governor's budget has maintained strong fiscal supports for schools, maintains support for programs that accelerate learning, and strengthen the state's commitment to equity. Just to call out a few highlights: Fully funding the LCFF cost of living increases, continuing expansion of transitional kindergarten, and support for learning recovery efforts, funding the cost of implementing universal screening for risk of reading challenges, the screener that Superintendent Thurmond just mentioned, which is so very important to our overall literacy initiatives in the state. Training math coaches to implement our new mathematics framework, continuing our commitment to free universal meals. We are slated next year to serve 848 million meals, maintaining funding for community schools. And of course, as noted, that is one of our big items on the agenda today: The approval of more than $1.2 billion in implementation grants for nearly 1,000 community schools. This will be the largest allocation of funds yet under the state's nation-leading initiative to transform schools through a child- and family-centered lens. The surge of applications demonstrates that there is large and growing enthusiasm for community schools in California. We are seeing the fruits of this work all over the state. In both urban and rural contexts, we are seeing community schools showing sharp reductions in absenteeism, strong gains in achievement as a result of their engagement of families, the available health services, the extended learning time after school and in the summer, connections to community resources.
At this time, we're going to move on to Item Two, which is the California Community Schools Partnership Program: Approval of Cohort III Implementation Grantees. Now, I do understand that Member Escobedo will need to recuse himself from this item, so we'll give him a moment to leave the room. The CDE recommends that the State Board of Education approve the California Community Schools Partnership Program Cohort III Implementation Grant Awards. You will find an attachment one. This item will be presented by Pete Callis of the CDE with introductory remarks from Chief Deputy Superintendent Nancy Kim Portillo.
Starting off our morning with some wonderful news this morning on community schools. Good morning, President Darling Hammond, Chair Glover Woods, Superintendent Thurmond, Chief Deputy nicely and esteemed board. My name is Nancy Portillo, and I have the honor of serving as Chief Deputy Superintendent at the department. On behalf of our superintendent and the department, we are very excited and pleased to share with you today our recommendation for Cohort III for the California Community Schools Partnership Program. As you know, the California Community Schools Partnership Program is a multi-year $4.1 billion investment in our students and in our future. It is the nation's largest investment of community, of hope, and transformation for our young people. Recently, I had the honor and the privilege of visiting a district and also learn from practitioners, educators, family members, and implementers. It's like the best part of the gig, when you get to go see the work and see the faces of the educators and of the students. I got to learn and see and touch and experience the outcomes of these historic and transformational community schools investments. I got to learn of programs that develop and encourage self-esteem and self-love, restorative practice programs, support for planning and collaboration for educators, and programs that result in the reduction of chronic absenteeism. One story that sticks close to my heart that I learned, I believe it was a first grader, a McKinney-Vinta student like me, a first grader that wasn't able to go to school. Probably nothing the first grader could control. I believe it was, within a two-month-or-so period, this young person had a little over 40 absences. With the literal support and the vehicle of community schools, this young person was able to increase their attendance, attend school, and reduce their chronic absenteeism. So in a similar, what, 60-day, two-month period, only missed school once. For a young person to be able to be in school, that is transformational. To be able to eat nutritious food, to learn, to be with peers, to not experience, why am I not in school, like my friends? That is transformational. So I wanted to thank you for your support and your continued support and your engagement and your leadership in this important work. Next, I would like to introduce Director Pete Callis, who will have the honor and pleasure of sharing our recommendation from the department Cohort III. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good morning. Pete Callis, I'm the Director of the Green College Transition Division. I've had the honor of running our community school program the entire time it's been in the department. It's quite an interesting program to blend with our CTE, but it's worked really well. We've actually started some work on blending with our CTE programs and making it even more, hopefully, transformational for the future. So I have the honor of presenting today on the item. In 2021, California Legislature allocated just over $3 billion for the community schools program to establish new and expand existing community schools through 2028. The community schools program included planning grants, which are no longer available. We had two rounds of planning grants, implementation grants, extension grants to local education agencies, along with coordinating grants to our county Office of Education, and contracts for regional technical assistance centers, which we're working with them now to expand out our work on community schools. We've partnered with the State Board of Education for approval of all of these programs and allocations across the state. In 2022-23, the legislature allocated additional funding for the community schools program: implementation grants and extension grants totaling just over $992 million; County Office of Education coordination grants totaling about $140 million; and a formative evaluation process, which is about $2.5 million, running from 2023 through 2031. The first evaluation has been submitted to the legislature. CDE Community Schools Office, which was a huge assistance to my division, of about $742,000 a year. The timeline was extended from 2028-29 to 2030-31. We've also included an attachment on our timeline. Planning grants, bless you. Planning grants were up to 10% of the total dollar amount that was allocated for community schools. We allocated in planning grants in '21, '22, and then again in '22, '23. They're for up to two years, up to $200,000 per qualifying entity. In '22, we allocated to 193 LEAs totaling about just over $38 million. In '22, '23, we allocated to 226 LEAs totaling just over $44 million. The remaining funds from the planning grants were moved over to the implementation grant For implementation grants, it was up to 70% of the total funding from '21, which is just over $2.1 billion. We had multiple rounds. We just finished, this is Cohort III, of implementation grants that we're requesting approval for today. We'll have one more round of implementation grants next year. They were good for a five-year grant period, anywhere from $100,000 per year to $500,000 annually per school site. Cohort I, we had 76 LEAs supporting 458 school sites funded at just over $625 million. Cohort II, we had 128 LEAs, grew a bit, 570 school sites being supported, at just over $750 million. Extension grants will be available to existing implementation grantees for up to $100,000 annually per site for two years at the conclusion of their implementation grant period. This is our funding chart that we utilize when we put together the allocations for each of our grantees. As you can see, this year, we've added the top row, which is for very small schools, 10 to 24 students. Prior to this year, we used the small to the large, so we added very small for this cohort. So we released the RFA in November of 2023. It was due in February of this year. The RFA required submission of multiple artifacts to substantiate community school planning. The CD, as I said, added the category for enrollment of 10 to 24 students. We received 352 complete applications: 215 from school districts, 24 from county offices of education, and 113 charter schools. So the funding criteria that we use for the implementation grants is 50% of the points awarded from the application that's submitted. Demonstrated need statutory criteria, 50% points awarded, including unduplicated pupil percentage and nonstability rates. Funding in this round aligns to the statutory priority to fund schools above 80% unduplicated pupil percentage. Lower unduplicated pupil percentage threshold for rural and small schools pursuant to SBE-approved priority and approach taken in previous cohorts. Small and rural schools in this round have a 70% UPP and above. Lower UPP threshold for planning-grantee schools pursuant to the statute and consistent with the approach taken for small and rural schools. Planning-grantee schools in this round have a 70% UPP or above. Schools not recommended for funding did not earn sufficient points based on the application quality and the demonstrated need. So for Cohort III, LEAs recommended for funding were 288, supporting 995 schools for a total allocation of $1,292,7,500. Of the breakdown of that, we had 171 school districts, 23 county offices of education, and 94 charter schools recommended for funding. 836 schools serving 80% and above UPP, 34 rural schools serving 70% and above UPP, eight schools with nonstability rate of 80% and above, 59 planning-grantee schools serving 70% and above UPP, and 58 planning grantees and rural schools serving 60% or above. So from our total allotment that we had this year for implementation grants, for Cohort IV, we have $594,691,746 remaining for Cohort IV as we move forward to next year. As you can see, regionally, we had schools and LEAs in each of our regions receive funding this year for implementation grants. For the formative evaluation piece, this was a process that we had to go through through the Request for Proposals, RFP process. HUMRO was selected to conduct the formative evaluation of the California Community Schools Partnership Program through the California Request for Proposal process. Anticipated contract start date is July 1, 2024, or upon DGS approval, whichever is later. Annual formative evaluation due to the legislature is by December 31, 2024. Annual formative evaluation due to the legislature is by December 31, 2024. Next steps for our community schools process is to welcome, is to conduct a welcome webinar for this group of Cohort Three implementation grantees. Connect all Cohort Three implementation grantees to their Regional Technical Assistance Center and the STAC. Distribute coordination grant funding to the county offices of education to support the community schools in their county. Collection and analysis of annual progress report for Cohort One and Cohort Two implementation grantees. And then we also have our Community Schools Summit in June, June 13th and 14th of this year. So at this point, we rec, California Department of Education is requesting the State Board of Education to approve the California Community Schools Partnership Program Cohort Three Implementation Grant Awards. And public comment.
Thank you, Pete. Thank you very much. At this time, we will open the phone line for public comment. Members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item may do so in person or by calling on the telephone, using the telephone number you see on the screen before you and using the access code provided on the slide that is shown now. While we're waiting for members of the public to call in, I'd like to ask our liaison members, President Darling Hammond and Member Yoshimoto Towery, if they have initial comments. After that, Board, I will ask if you have any clarifying questions before we go to public comment, which will be followed by board discussion. So at this time, I will start with President Darling Hammond. If you would like to share some comments, President Darling Hammond.
Thank you. I want to appreciate Pete and the members of the CDE for the very intensive work, not just this year, but over the last couple of years, to really launch this community schools initiative. It is quite intensive. It's already beginning to pay off. We can see in the earlier cohorts of community schools, the gains that they are making. I am fortunate to be connected to a number of the studies that are going on right now of community schools, and we see some really wonderful practices that are raising achievement, that are getting kids to school. I appreciated the story that was shared about the student experiencing homelessness, and there are just thousands of stories and examples like that. So I'm very enthusiastic about this allocation of funding and appreciative of the work that the department and the technical advisory centers have been doing. And I'll pass the ball to my colleague, Allison.
Thank you, President Darling Hammond. Member Yoshimoto Towery, please.
Thank you. As Board President Darling Hammond has mentioned, just the enormity of the action that we're taking today is what is impressed upon me. We're adding almost 1,000 community schools to this effort, and if approved, we will have almost 2,000 community schools in the state of California, as mentioned, the largest in the nation. And I also want to just acknowledge the work of every school site and LEA in preparing the applications. Not only are they preparing the applications, but they're having to submit multiple artifacts to substantiate the partnerships that they have and the counties and the RTACs for supporting those applications. And I know CDE, that was a Herculean effort to read all of those applications as well. I do also want to acknowledge, as Director Callis has described, not every applicant is slated to receive implementation grant funding. So I want to recognize those applicants that are not on the proposed awarty list and thank them for their continued commitment to our students and our communities. I'd like to urge our county offices that support these schools in particular to think creatively about how to use other funding such as, related funding such as CYBHI, our ELOP, our Expanded Learning Opportunities Funding, community engagement initiatives, to continue to realize their implementation plans with braided and blended funding and other ways. And then finally, I, I look forward to hearing more. I spent three days last week with school sites and county offices that are engaged in this work and was just left reminded about how nuanced the implementation work of this really is and how much of a heavy lift it is at the school site. And so I look forward to hearing continually from the schools and our LEAs about how to implement, sustain, and scale this work. And special kudos to our RTACs and STAC and county offices also for learning how to work differently together to truly integrate the tenants of community schools into our own technical assistance work and to model the collaboration that we're asking our school sites and of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Member Yoshimoto Towery. At this time, we will go to clarifying questions from the board. And Board, just as a gentle reminder, we do have interpretation services translating your comments. So if you would, as you are providing your comments, do so at a pace that will allow for the interpretation services to keep up with your comments. So do we have any clarifying questions from the board before we go into public comment? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, we will now take up public comment. We encourage all those giving public comment to please state your name and affiliation for the record. Please remember to turn down the speaker volume on your computers if you are following the live feed. Speakers will be limited to one minute each. Where speakers require interpretation, two minutes will be provided. We will first start with public comment from the phone. Is there anyone waiting to provide public comment on the phone line?
Yes, we have 11 callers in the queue. I will open the phone line now.
Thank you.
Good morning, State Board of Education. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Members of the board, staff, Steve McDougall, representing CFT, a union of educators and classified professionals. This is a great undertaking, and what an allocation, and what a gift to students, families, and communities of California. However, we have to think about what assistance is being provided by the technical regional centers to ensure all pillars are being adhered to in these grant applications. CFE is concerned that the leadership, shared leadership pillar, is not being adhered to in a number of LEAs across the state. Furthermore, technical assistance needs to be provided to sustain community schools moving forward so that, once the grant money runs out, we can continue to provide the gift to California students. Please make sure this work happens in the technical centers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, ending in the last four digits, 4220. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Good morning. I am Eldra Kisha McGee, parent organizer within the Congregations United for Change, PICO California Ed for Live, and the California Partnership. I am excited that the board is approving the current round of implementation grants, which includes six schools in the San Bernardino Unified School District. I see UC has been supporting parents and students to partner with these schools to be ready. My nephew King advocated for his school, Pacific High, to apply for funding and prioritize mental health services for students at Immerton Elementary. I met with parents, students, and communities to set a plan for implementation to support kids to be ready to attend our gateway schools, which offer the opportunity to graduate with their AA. But there are still schools in our community with great needs that have not yet applied. One of these schools, my church, adopted. That is why it is important for us to work together to protect the funds for Cohort Four. All of our students deserve the opportunity to attend school where they feel loved and supported to learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, ending in the last four digits, 6027. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Good morning. My name is Chaucer Osadas. I'm an educational justice parent organizer within the City Struggle, located in Row Heights, District 14, and the California Partnership. Working as a parent organizer, I have seen how community schools are an amazing approach to how we should be doing education because they build trusting relationships and teams that involve all members of the school community. There are still many school communities within existing implementation grant districts that have not yet applied for funds and should also be considered. We must work together to preserve and expand the funding for this transformative community schools approach designed to support our students, who have been systematically marginalized and be served by our education system. It is up to all of us, families, students, educators, community partners, and school and system leaders to create transformational community schools that are places of belonging, opportunity, and celebration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, ending in the last four digits, 5137. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello. My name is Katie Nunez Adler, and I'm the statewide coordinator with the California Partnership. Successful community schools are committed to building deep relational culture supported by systems and structures for shared leadership in school governance and implementation. Shared decision-making practices must prioritize transparency and mutual respect and accountability. The CDE, STAC, RTAC, county offices of education, and community partners are all crucial in supporting districts and grantees in building capacity for school leaders and teams that is essential to implementing the community schools approach. This includes clear guidance and support to create strong communities of practice at every level to fulfill the cornerstone commitment to shared decision-making and participatory practices with students, families, educators, and communities. We also want to thank the CDE and SBE staff for being responsive to our request to provide simultaneous interpretation today. We look forward to continuing to collaborate and to make board meetings inclusive spaces for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, ending in the last four digits, 8323. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Good morning. Myra Martinez with the Community Schools Learning Exchange. CSLEX has been working directly with two of eight RTACs as well as several LEAs across the state to support community school implementation. Our comments are from this on-the-ground vantage point. First, congratulations to the latest CCSPP grantee. Secondly, we are heartened to see that schools, LEAs, county offices, and the RTACs are working with a deep commitment to make meaningful change for students, families, and their teachers. Community school implementation requires courage and humility, does not happen in a vacuum, and develops at the speed of trust. We are glad to see the intentional work to build enabling conditions for success that is trusting relationships, shared vision, actionable data, and inclusive decision-making. We encourage new grantees to take the time to build those conditions with their students and families, community partners, and leaders and educators. Without that focus, meaningful change will be difficult to achieve. Thanks again for your leadership.
Thank you. Next caller, ending in the last four digits, 8124. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Hello. Good morning. My name is Maria Ruiz, and I'm a parent leader in Los Angeles. I am part of organizations such as Indian City Struggle, the Partnership for Los Angeles Schools, and the California Partnership. I am supporting community schools in California. My son Eduardo attended Mendez High School and suffered from anxiety and depression. He needed psychological help at school. I just like my son. There are thousands of students in California who are going through these mental issues, especially in our hard-nosed schools, where there is a lot of access to medical care and mental health resources. When the community have organized and tried to have wellness centers in our schools, now Mendez High School is a community school. Students and families now have access to various health services, which are of great help. Students who receive the services and help they need are more likely to perform better in their studies. We want our children to have the opportunities to achieve their goals. That is why it is important to allocate funds needed to have more community schools in California. Thank you for listening to this call to action.
Thank you. Next caller with the last four digits, 5129. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Hi, good morning. My name is Sandra Casares, and I am a parent and eighth-grade student in Anaheim Union High School District and a parent leader with OCO, PICO Ed for Live, and California Partnership. Thanks to OCO and their workshops and accessibility, I have learned what community schools are all about. I appreciate that community schools were created with the purpose of benefiting our children and giving them more opportunities and tools to succeed. I see community schools as the bridge that connects parents, students, and school staff to touch and work on topics that we do not cover in traditional schools, such as creativity and mental well-being. I hope to see my vision as a parent and that equipped community schools are the new norm. Someone once told me, times change, life changes constantly. We must always remember to stay updated. Community schools are definitely the new updates for children and our future leaders. It is up to all of us, families, students, educators, community partners, and schools and system leaders to create transformational community schools that are places for belonging, opportunity, and celebration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, ending in the last four digits, 7004. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Soy Natie Velez, madre de dos hijos en Anaheim High School, padre líder en OCO. La manera que me ha impactado las escuelas comunitarias ha sido muy positiva, ya que en mi escuela encontré los recursos, programas, orientación, y conexión con organizaciones como OCO, el cual me ha dado las herramientas para prepararme como una madre empoderada, con liderazgo para poder guiar a otros padres de familia que se involucren y conozcan más sobre sus escuelas comunitarias. Creo que es importante que las escuelas comunitarias continúen, ya que han tenido un impacto positivo en nuestra comunidad. Hay que reconocer que todavía hay desventajas en oportunidades, alcances, acceso para los jóvenes. Por otra parte, gracias a la implementación de escuelas comunitarias, tenemos la apertura, la inclusión como padres de poder expresar nuestras observaciones y prioridades en cuanto a la implementación de los recursos, proteger los fondos de la subvención de implementación de la Ronda 4 y garantizar que este enfoque impulsado por equidad se preserva y se amplíe para que cada escuela sea una escuela comunitaria. Gracias.
It's not working. I'm sorry about that. Hello. My name is Natie Velez, mother of two children in Anaheim High School. As a parent leader with OCCCO, the way community schools have impacted me has been very positive. My son's schools have found resourceful programs, guidance, and connection with organizations like OCCCO, which has given me tools to prepare myself as an empowered mother with leadership to guide other parents to get involved and learn more about community schools. I think it's very important that community schools continue as they have had a positive impact on the community. We must recognize that they are still disadvantages and opportunities outreach and access for young people. On the other hand, thanks to the implemented obstacles, we have opened the inclusion as parents to be able to express our observations and priorities regarding this implementation of resources. Protect our round for implementation grant funding and ensure that this equity-driven approach is preserved and expanded so every school in our community is able to. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, ending in the last four digits, 9176. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Blanca Lascano, y soy madre líder con OCO, PICO, and California Partnership. Para mí en lo personal, el impacto de tener una escuela comunitaria en mi comunidad ha sido muy importante, ya que muchas familias tienen acceso a diferentes actividades y programas que se han implementado en la escuela. Los estudiantes participan en actividades como baile foflórico, tal vez lectura, mariachi, entre otras actividades más. Mi participación en OCO ha sido de gran ayuda, ya que con sus talleres y entrenamientos me ayudan para ser la voz en mi comunidad. Mientras se siga apoyando a las escuelas comunitarias, mayor será el impacto en nuestra comunidad en general. Depende de todos nosotros, familias, estudiantes, educadores, socios, y comunitarios de líderes escolares de sistemas para crear escuelas comunitarias transformadoras que sean lugares de pertenencia, oportunidades, y celebración. Gracias.
Good morning. My name is Blanca Lascano. I'm a parent leader of OCO, PICO, Education for Live. And the California Partnership, for me personally, the impact in having a community school in my community has been very important. Since many families have access to different activities and programs that have been implemented at the school students, many families have access to different activities and programs that have been implemented at the school students. Participants participate in activities such as baile foflórico, reading supports in the afternoons, and mariachi. Among the other activities, my participation in OCO has been of great help since the workshop and training has helped me to be the voice of my community. As long as we continue supporting community schools, we have a great impact in our community as a whole. It is up to us, families, students, educators... in our community as a whole. It is up to us, families, students, educators, and community partners, and schools leaders to create transformational community schools that are places of belonging, opportunity, and celebration.
Next caller ending in the last four digits, two zero six nine. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Soy Norma Castellán, madre líder de OCO, PICO, Ed for Live, and California Partnership, madre de un estudiante del onceavo grado en Anaheim Union. OCO me ha capacitado dándome herramientas para participar de manera más auténtica. Por ejemplo, este ciclo escolar pude participar en el proceso de LCAP y ver la conexión para poder sostener las escuelas comunitarias. Cada escuela ofrece diferentes programas, y con escuelas comunitarias somos más intencionales, siendo de gran impacto positivo para cada estudiante, ya que no solo ayuda en su éxito académico, también lo hace en sus vidas personales y con su salud mental. Depende de todos nosotros, familias, estudiantes, educadores, socios comunitarios, líderes escolares, y de sistemas, para crear escuelas comunitarias transformadoras, que sean lugares de pertenencia, oportunidades, y celebración, y no solo un programa pasajero. Gracias.
Hello, my name is Norma Castellán. I'm a parent leader with OCO, PICO, California Partnership. And as a parent of an 11th grade student in Anaheim Union, OCO has given me the training and tools to participate more authentically. For example, this school year, I was able to participate in LCAP process and the connection to be able to sustain community schools. Each school offers different programs, which community schools we are more intentional about being a great positive impact for each student, since it not only helps, since it not only helps in academic success, but also in their personal lives with their mental health. It depends on all of us, families, students, educators, community partners, and schools, and system leaders to create transformative community schools that are placed, that are places of belonging, opportunity, and celebration. It is not just passing program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller ending in the last four digits, eight two five six. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Hello, this is Robert Manwaring from Children Now. I first wanted to thank the board members for this historic effort funding the largest cohort of community schools and continuing this effort despite the challenging budget situation the state faces. In terms of the implementation side, a couple things that we'd like you to think about around some boring stuff around data and reporting requirements. We encourage you to promote a best practice of integrating the planning of this funding into the LCAPS so that community members can be engaged in how these resources are being used. Second, thinking about data reporting for these schools. We want to have this support, not only continuous improvement of the community school process, but also to have a strong evaluation of these programs to help advocates like Children Now be successful in the budget process in the future, to continue funding for these efforts. Thanks again for all your work on this issue.
Thank you. That concludes public comment over the phone. We will now move to public comment in person, and I believe we have 11 people signed up.
Good morning. My name is Lucero Soto. I am a parent, community organizer, with Sacramento ACT, PICO, Ed for Live, and a member of the California Partnership for the Future of Learning, a statewide alliance of community organizing and advocacy groups that center low-income, Black, Indigenous, Brown, and immigrant students, families, and communities of color across the state to strengthen our public schools. We appreciate how at the department, board, and the State Transformational Assistance Center have integrated our feedback rooted in the engagement of directly impacted students, families, community partners, and educators into the development of the Community Schools Partnership Program. Authentic relationship rooted in mutual understanding, trust, and shared power and decision-making are essential to improving the social, emotional well-being and academic outcomes for students. Co-creating transformational community schools takes all of us together, students, families, community partners, and educators, partnering with all levels of our statewide system of support. Thank you.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Camerina Gómez. Soy una madre líder de Sacramento ACT en el Distrito Unificado de Sacramento y miembro de California Partnership.
El micrófono está apagado.
La escuela de mi hija Rosa Park es una de las escuelas comunitarias de parte del Grupo Uno. Hemos estado aprendiendo y educando a otros padres sobre el enfoque de las escuelas comunitarias. Durante el año escolar pasado, más de quince padres se reunieron en un complejo de apartamentos local durante la noche para construir una comunidad y una visión para nuestra escuela. En una de esas reuniones, nuestro nuevo director se reunió con nosotros en su primer mes. Esto significó mucho para nosotros como padres, líderes, después de tener más de ocho directores en nuestra escuela durante un año escolar. Hemos podido ver algunos cambios en materia de seguridad desde que comenzamos a trabajar juntos. Aunque todavía tenemos mucho más trabajo por delante para crear nuestras escuelas comunitarias, la asociación con nuestros directores nos permitirá apoyar el éxito de los estudiantes. Los estudiantes y las familias, los socios comunitarios, y los educadores son esenciales para procrear escuelas de alegría y oportunidad para los padres y estudiantes. Nada sobre nosotros sin nosotros. Gracias.
Hello, my name is Camerina Gómez. I'm a parent leader with the Sacramento ACT in the Sacramento Unified School District and a member of the California Partnership. My children's school, Russell Parks, is part of a Cohort One. We have been learning and educating other parents about the community schools approach. During this past school year, over 15 parents met in a local apartment complex during the evening to build community ambition for our schools. Our new principal joined us in one of those meetings in his first month. This meant a lot to us as parents, leaders with over eight principals in our school district. We have been able to see some changes around safety since we began working together, although we still have a lot of, a lot more work to do ahead of us. Creating our relationship centering community schools, the partnership with our principal will allow us to support student access, success. Student families, community partners, and educators are essential for co-creating schools and joy. Belonging and opportunity for all students. Nothing about us without us.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Alma García. Soy padre líder con SAC ACT en el Distrito de Sacramento y miembro de California Partnership. El Estado debe proteger los fondos de la subvención de implementación de la Ronda Cuatro para garantizar que los fondos para este programa impulsado por la equidad se preserven, se amplíen, y se hagan permanentes más allá de la expiración de esta iniciativa, para maximizar la planificación y la alineación con otros procesos escolares y distritales. El CDE debería publicar la aplicación para las subvenciones de la implementación de la cohorte cuatro a principios del año escolar, idealmente en agosto o septiembre, para que las subvenciones se puedan otorgar en enero. Depende de todos nosotros, familias, estudiantes, educadores, socios comunitarios, y líderes escolares, y de sistemas, para crear escuelas comunitarias transformadoras, que sean lugares de pertenencia, oportunidades, y celebración. Gracias.
Hello, my name is Alma García, parent leader with Sacramento ACT, ACT, in Sacramento City School District, and a member of the California Partnership. The state should protect the round for implementation grant funding to ensure that the funding for this equity-driven program is preserved, expanded, and made permanent beyond the sunset of its initiative to maximize planning and alignment with other schools and district processes. The CDE should release the RFA for cohort for implementation grants earlier in the school year, ideally in August or September, so grants can be awarded by January. It is up to all of us, families, students, educators, community partners, and school and system leaders to create transformational community schools that are places, that are places of belonging, opportunity, and celebration.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es María Beltrán. Soy madre líder de SAC ACT, madre de familia de Jaram Johnson, Willsey Woods, en Sacramento City Unificado, y miembro de la Asociación de California. Mis escuelas son parte del Grupo Uno. Estamos trabajando activamente con nuestros socios comunitarios y padres para conocer el papel clave que tenemos en la transformación de nuestras escuelas. Se necesita que todos nosotros creemos activamente equipos compartidos de toma de decisiones. Estamos entusiasmados de que pronto contrataremos a nuestros coordinadores del sitio escolar. Este año esperamos con ansias la presentación de APR, y esperamos ser parte del proceso. Se deben priorizar y apoyar con herramientas multilingües los informes anuales de progreso y las presentaciones realizadas por equipo de toma de decisiones compartidos. Cuando las presentaciones anuales de las escuelas comunitarias son desarrolladas juntamente y presentadas públicamente por equipos de toma de decisiones, compartidas a sus comunidades y distritos escolares, los aprendizajes y las mejoras pueden ser asumidos y apoyados colectivamente. Depende de todos nosotros, familias, estudiantes, educadores, socios, comunitarios, y líderes escolares, y de sistemas, para crear escuelas comunitarias transformadoras, que sean lugares de pertenencia y oportunidades. Gracias.
Señora, disculpe. Este, ¿podría otra vez repetir la lectura y hablar en sentencias despacías para poder estar hoy instantáneamente? Lo que pasa es que no la tengo en el programa.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es María Beltrán.
Good morning. My name is María Beltrán.
Soy madre líder de SAC ACT.
I'm a mother and leader of SAC ACT.
Madre de familia de Jaram Johnson y Willsey Woods.
Mother and family of the Jaram Johnson student.
SAC City Unificado y miembro de la Asociación de California.
Member of the California Association of Education.
Mis escuelas son parte del Grupo Uno.
My schools are part of, part one of the Group One.
Estamos trabajando activamente con nuestros socios comunitarios.
We're working closely with our communities, associates.
Y padres para conocer el papel clave que tenemos en la transformación de nuestras escuelas.
And, and parents to keep close eyes on the transformation of our schools.
Se necesita que todos nosotros creemos activamente equipos compartidos de toma de decisiones.
And we need to have groups, I'm sorry, otra vez.
Se necesita que todos nosotros creemos activamente equipos compartidos de toma de decisiones.
We need to create teams to take decisions together.
Estamos entusiasmados de que pronto contrataremos a nuestros coordinadores del sitio escolar.
We're happy to associate with coordinators of our school district.
Este año esperamos con ansias la presentación de APR.
We can't wait. This year, we'll start with ATR.
Y esperamos ser parte del proceso.
We're, we're happy to be part of the progress.
Se deben priorizar y apoyar con herramientas multilingües.
We need to prioritize to help out with those bilingual, multilingual.
Los informes anuales de progreso y las presentaciones realizadas por equipo.
The, to inform us of the progress as a team.
Por equipo de toma de decisiones compartidos.
To take decisions on agreements together of the programs.
Cuando las presentaciones anuales de las escuelas comunitarias.
With the annual of the community schools awareness.
Son desarrolladas conjuntamente y presentadas públicamente.
So they can be publicly announced and be in the same line.
Por equipos de toma de decisiones compartidas.
To take decisions as joint groups.
A sus comunidades y distritos escolares.
With the community and school districts.
Los aprendizajes y las mejoras.
The better learnings and to better ourselves.
Pueden ser asumidos y apoyados colectivamente.
They could be collectively helped.
Depende de todos nosotros, familias y estudiantes.
It depends on all of us, families and students.
Educadores, socios.
Educators.
Comunitarios y líderes escolares.
And school leaders.
Y de sistemas para crear escuelas comunitarias.
And the systems to create community schools.
Transformadoras, que sean lugares.
Transformadoras, sí, señora.
Transformadoras, que sean lugares de pertenencia.
To be places that we belong to.
Y oportunidades.
And opportunities.
Good morning. My name is Maritza Benmudes and I am a parent leader in Anaheim Union, Anaheim Elementary, and community organizer with OCO, PICO, Ed for Live, and the California Partnership. As a parent member of the Anaheim High School Community Schools Site Implementation Team, we voted on investing community school funds for co-teaching so teachers have the time to plan and collaborate and have the opportunity to develop teaching strategies together and create stronger relationships within their classroom. This example uplifts how students, families, and communities can work in partnership with educators to demonstrate the positive impact of community schools, sorry, community schools' investments, and listening to our community through community voice circles. Students, families, community, community partners, and educators are essential for co-creating schools of joy, belonging, and opportunity for all students. So nothing about us without us. And I want to give a shout-out to the Parent Leadership Institute at Anaheim Elementary School that is celebrating their celebration today, who helps leadership and empower parents like myself. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Frida Sanchez. I'm a 10th grade at Anaheim High School, a youth leader with OCO, PICO, Ed for Live, and the California Partnership. The California Partnership for the Future of Learning strongly supports the proposal to award 995 implementation grants in Cohort Three of the California Community Schools Partnership Program. This expansion nearly doubles the number of schools engaging in this transformative whole-child approach. I'm absolutely thrilled because the Anaheim Elementary School District, where I attended elementary school and where my younger brothers currently attend, is set to receive implementation grants for 13 schools. What's even more thrilling is that my brother's schools will be transformed into community schools just like mine is. It's up to all of us, families, students, educators, community partners, school, and system leaders to create transformational community schools that are places of belonging, opportunity, and celebration, and where students like me can thrive. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is María González. I am parent leader with OCO, PICO, Ed for Live, and the California Partnership. And I have an eighth grade student at Anaheim Union High School District. I am thankful for the opportunity to be a parent leader with OCO, where I have learned a lot, and I have developed the tools to help other parents build their relation, their leadership skills. Throughout this school year, I have seen how they are growing in their transformation and have demonstrated true integration in the shared decision-making, the, and the shared decision-making teams. We want to keep making changes, and this is only happening if we continue to get funding for community schools. Parents and students play a critical role in the creating transformative community schools. When we share the power, something might happen. Transformation can only happen when students, families, and communities, educators, and the district leaders are the authentic partners. Nothing about us without us. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Uni Linden with Public Advocates and the California Partnership. Bipartisan community resources to provide integrated student supports and engaging students, families, and educators in decision-making. Community schools are having a positive impact. Schools like Buena Vista Horace Mann in San Francisco, which reduced chronic absenteeism by eight percent. As Board Member Yoshimoto Tari noted, to support this innovative approach, schools must braid together state and local funding sources. And by design, county offices of education are supposed to play a critical role in supporting community schools to learn how to do this. As a third round of coordination grants are being awarded to county offices of education, we ask you to ensure grantees are getting the support and guidance they need to advise schools and districts receiving implementation grants on how to braid funding sources together to sustain the community school model. Also, there has been little information about how these coordination grants are being used by counties, and we request the department to report on these grants in the future. Thank you for your commitment to transforming schools into places of joy and deep learning for every student.
Good morning. My name is Inés Rosales and I'm here with the California Partnership. To ensure transparency and long-term sustainability, districts implementing the California Community Schools Partnership Program should integrate community school initiatives into their local control accountability, accountability plans, or LCAPS. This allows stakeholders to understand how these programs fit into the district's overall education plans. education plans and facilitates better coordination and allocation of resources. Grantees of the program are also required to publicly post their community school grant applications and plans on their websites. This promotes accountability, enables stakeholders to understand the grantees' vision and strategies and encourages community engagement and dialogue around the community schools initiative. By openly communicating their community school plans and aligning them with the district's comprehensive education plans, districts demonstrate their commitment to the initiative and foster trust among stakeholders. This ensures that community schools are viewed as integral components of the district's approach to student success, thank you.
Good morning, State Board of Education members, my name is Lorraine Richards, I am a classroom teacher representing California Teachers Association. CTA is appreciative of the CDE's work to process so many applications as part of Cohort Three. It is great to see the number of LEAs being awarded and this level of demand for community schools funding. We believe that this continues to show that the investment in establishing and cultivating community schools through our state is the right one. CTA believes this historic investment continues to be the right approach to help provide services and support each neighborhood's needs and ensures decisions created and run by the people who know our students best, families, educators, community organizations and the students themselves. CTA stands ready to support this work and to guarantee its implementation in these goals in mind, thank you.
Good morning, SBE, my name is Angela Steagle and I am also a classroom teacher representing the California Teachers Association. When the ESTAC contract was awarded in May 2022 to the Alameda County Office of Education as the fiscal agent, the intent was always that the four entities of Alameda County, the UCLA Center for Community Schooling, Californians for Justice and the National Education Association would model shared decision making and shared power that is not driven or directed or controlled by only one entity. CTA looks forward to seeing the entities that are receiving significant state funds to provide supports such as the ESTAC, RTACs and county offices not only strive to model shared decision making but to also offer high quality support and technical assistance to grantees that clearly articulates the transformative nature of community schools for our students, our educators, our parents and our communities, thank you.
That concludes public comment in the room.
Thank you, thank you very much and thank you to the members of the public who provided comments via phone and in person, we do appreciate your thoughts. At this time, I'd like to open for a board discussion, so are there any board members that would like to share any thoughts or comments at this time? I see Member Lewis, yes.
Vice President Glover Woods, this is maybe more of a clarifying question leading into comments, is that okay?
Yes, that is quite right.
Based on the, some of the input and a review of the slides, I just have a question, if we, there was some concern about, you know, the last round of funding just being available for implementation. So I just have a couple of questions. On Slide Six, where it had remaining funds go toward implementation grants and also on Slide Eleven, remaining implementation grant funding, so those are, the one on Slide Six is for those.
From planning grants.
From planning grants in the Twenty-One, Twenty-Two and Twenty-Two, Twenty-Three. And then the one on Eleven is for Cohort Four.
Correct.
Right? So with the concern about some of the callers had regarding the lack of funding that may be available for new applications, right? So the money is already earmarked and so when this money's gone unless there's other money allocated from the governor, there is no room for flexibility for new grants.
Correct.
Is that, that's correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Slide Six was once the planning, two years of planning grants were completed.
Okay.
That many, whatever was left from that ten percent, up to ten percent shifted to the implementation.
And then my next question is about the evaluation that Humro is going to do and some of the callers and even the in-person comments about the technical assistance that's being provided, are the county offices of educate, who's all included in that evaluation process? Is it just the schools and districts that are implementing or is there, how do we, how is it, with the concern about guidance, direction, oversight, is that going to be part of the evaluation process also for county offices of ed or?
The evaluation process was within the request for proposal and then they build the tool that they will do the evaluation with, Humro will. It'll be based on feedback, I don't have all the information on that but we can get that for you.
Feedback from the various districts, right?
And the offices are supposed to provide support, the RTACs and ESTAC are supposed to provide support, technical assistance.
So there could potentially be questions on the Humro evaluation that allows districts to comment about that support? I'm just trying to figure out, you know, the concern about the, what they're saying is the lack of, potential lack of guidance, I mean, that's the allegation, lack of guidance, lack of oversight. I'm just wondering, will that be part of the evaluation process?
Should be, as they go through the process, we haven't seen the tool that they're going to develop yet.
I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Member Lewis, Member McQuillan has his hand raised remotely, Member McQuillan.
Thank you, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we sure can.
All right, thank you very much, I just want to make a comment and have a clarifying question that truly, this is monumental in terms of support for our schools and underrepresented communities, the possibilities here are just fantastic, so I applaud everyone's effort to make this happen. I really liked the comment of trying to integrate this effort into our ALCAP plans also, I really appreciate that comment, a couple of times it was made. And then I guess my clarifying question is about the technical assistance, I know the technical assistance centers are providing support to districts all over, all over the state and just wondering about what that looks like, if it includes visits to the LEAs or to, I'm wondering about the assurance that it's a shared decision making process and shared vision that's going on and what that technical assistance might look like from those centers, so, thank you.
So, I can comment a bit on that, the technical assistance centers would do needs assessments with each of the LEAs and determine what each of the LEAs need in support and then work with them to develop a plan to help them move forward with structuring their community schools, that's just one thing.
Thank you, are there other questions? Yes, Member Patilla Brownson.
I just wanted to thank all the parents and public commenters who came out to talk about what this actually means on the ground and particularly wanted to, I don't think she's in the room anymore, but I was delighted to hear from the student who spoke about how she's seeing it make real and appreciable changes in her actual school environment. In the presentation, I also wanted to call out appreciation for some of the data cuts that you've provided to let us know both sort of cuts in terms of student body sizes but also of elementary versus high school versus unified school districts to give us a sense globally of who is participating and applying. It's also exciting to see the non-stability rate sort of threading through, not just with equity multiplier conversations but more broadly here in the deck. I did want to ask a question and this is more prospective in terms of the evaluation ahead, if you could just sort of describe more top lines as to what we should expect around the evaluation?
So, for the evaluation process that we went through with the RFP, it was very closed for us, so we weren't that involved in what will come out of it right now. It's, I was involved in one piece of the whole process and that's all the information I had, nothing else was shared with me on that piece. I think as we move forward, we can share more about it, but it was a closed process for us. I hope that makes sense.
It does and maybe I'm just flagging it as it would be great to learn more about.
Yeah, absolutely.
Contingent on CDE's vote, for sure.
Thank you, Member Holken.
Thank you, I also want to echo all the thanks, echo the thanks for all of the public comment. It's when we're, when we're talking about something this big and monumental in terms of the dollar amounts, it's really so important to ground that in the difference it's making on, you know, in schools and in communities, so I appreciated hearing that so much. And I just wanted to, I think it's more of a comment than a question, but it might be a question. So I heard a couple of things, one was the, even with the huge investment that we're making in the state in community schools, we're getting close to the end of that funding timeline. And so we have, if my math is right, about 2,000 schools so far, somewhere in the pipeline, who I really hope will be able to sustain this work because it is so transformative for schools and families and kids, communities as a whole. And so I know we've talked a little bit about trying to figure out where, you know, other sources of funding and I've learned some new terms, grading and blending, I thought that was about hair. But in any case, I, I wonder if part of the work of the technical assistance could be in helping grantees figure out how to sustain this work from a financial perspective? And because I know as a, somebody who has been responsible for creating new programs and then trying to keep them going, every time you put a lot of time and energy into something that makes a difference and it disappears, it's a huge setback for schools and communities and most importantly, for kids.
And actually, you answered your question, it's part of the communications we've had with the technical assistance centers is to assist with the funding going forward and make it sustainable.
Thank you.
Member Roscoe Gonzalez, and then Member Rodriguez.
Well, Sharon, you also, Member Holken, also kind of addressed one of the questions I had, but just given the substantial funding allocations as continuous support mechanisms, how does this California Community Schools Partnership Program plan to ensure accountability and measure effectiveness in achieving its intended outcomes? I'm particularly interested in the regards to the pillar of shared governance, which was resonating amongst all the commenters. I also think of the support system of the ESTAC, RTACs and COEs modeling shared decision making structures. And now that we're adding 228 grantees, is the support system prepared for this influx of grantees? So two parts, should the shared governance and what support systems do we have in place for these new grantees?
Can I have our administrator over the community schools office come up and he can, he's more in-depth and involved with RTACs and best.
Thank you.
May I have the question one more time, please?
Well, my concerns and kind of thinking of having the effectiveness of this new transformational process that we're going through, community schools, I'm thinking of how we're going to ensure the accountability and measure effectiveness in achieving its intended outcomes, specifically to the pillar of shared governance, which I kept hearing in Spanish and bilingual, so nada conmigo sino incluye nuestra voz. And so it's really important to say that they include all shared holders, all stakeholders' voice, so what planning structures do we have for shared governance to ensure that that pillar's being effectively followed through with? And also, now that we're adding 228 grantees, what support systems do we have in place for the influx of these?
Great question, so to begin with, part of the RFA, the artifact that Mr. Callas talked about, one of the artifacts is literally what you're asking, the names and the roles of each member who is in the governing decision making body and we expect the families to be included in that. And then we have what's called an APR or Annual Performance Report that each LEA and site submits and it's collected in that we ask not only the percentage of the family and community members but also even in parentheses, we include that they must be or it's strongly encouraged that they are from the communities that are underserved such as families with disabilities, families who are English learners and families who experience homelessness.
Thank you.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, good morning, thank you, Mr. Callas and Ms. Portillo for such a wonderful, uplifting presentation. It definitely fills me with hope because some of what I see my students experiencing and other students throughout California, community schools has the potential and has proven to be able to offer wraparound services that do create, mitigate some of the social emotional learning or socioeconomic issues that our students are confronting. And I also want to lift up the shared governance, how important that is. I was very excited to see the parents here and I wanted to say something to them as well because oftentimes, right, you know, in traditional schools, it's been that parents maybe don't feel comfortable and to create a space where parents can come in and be a part of the decision making is just wonderful. And to hear the words transformation and joy coming from the parents and save schools just again, really fills me with hope, so thank you.
Thank you, Member Rodriguez, and just for the board to know, our parents are still here, they just happen to be in a different room with the interpretation services and again, appreciate the acknowledgement of the time that they took. Yes, Member Rodriguez, please do. They are.
Padres de familia, solo quiero decirles que me llenaron de alegría escucharlos esta mañana y me da mucho gusto que estén envueltos e involucrados en la educación de sus hijos, gracias.
Thank you, Member Rodriguez, I do have a couple of comments as well. One, and it's probably going along with the same theme that you've heard around the technical assistance, so I'll give you a little preview there, most definitely. And we know with the addition of the grantees that we have coming on board, which is again absolutely phenomenal, we want to ensure that this transformative opportunity is available to as many students as possible. We know bringing that on, it requires a very strong structure to be able to support such as our ESTACs, RTACs, county office and the like. So just a couple of points, one, I know we don't have a lot of information about the evaluation tool that will be used, I do request that we have some more information provided in future updates to the board with a little bit more detail. Also, I, again, not quite sure what was in the RFA, so if it's not appropriate to ensure this piece is in the evaluation tool, I'd like to find out how we might be able to do this, but the piece that I'm talking about is ensuring that in the evaluation tool that there's feedback received on the support that the LEAs and schools are receiving from this very strong infrastructure that's been put in place for them. It would be very important to know not just how the schools are doing and the LEAs are doing, but also how they perceive the support that they are indeed receiving. I do have a question and the question is in relation to what process our ESTAC, RTACs and county offices are using right now to collaborate amongst themselves so that we have a coordinated support across our state? Can you give us some insight as to how those entities, our technical assistance entities, are collaborating to provide that support?
That's a great and important question, so Alameda County Office of Education being the state transformative and the eight RTACs, they have what's called collective learning space, so they meet on a monthly basis, we meet with them so we could co-create the agenda, they have office hours that they agenda. They have office hours that they can call. They have an actual 1-800 number and an email. And then frequently, they have contacts outside of those meetings if any R-TAC needs any kind of a help. It's a very organic and a very close collegial relationship between their S-TAC and the eight R-TACs and our office.
Wonderful. And how do the county offices that are receiving those coordination grants fold into that process?
So my office, myself, actually, we meet on a bi-weekly, bi-weekly basis with California County Superintendent's Liaison. So I'm part of the, like being the ambassador, the messenger between the S-TAC and R-TAC. They do, because eight of the R-TACs are obviously County Office of Education. So there are times that they share information.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And as we continue to learn more, as our LEAs are going into that implementation phase, it'll be wonderful to hear updates on that aspect as well. And my last comment is also more of a, I don't know if it's a request or a comment, but I'm going to give it to you just the same. And that's in relation to the posting of the community schools grant application and implementation plan on the LEA websites. First, let me check to be sure, is that supposed to be posted? Are LEAs required to post either their application or plans on their websites?
Yeah. So implementation only.
Okay.
Say too, that it needs to be approved by their local governing board. But that's a great suggestion. We could.
Okay. So yes, if we could, again, our technical assistance infrastructure, I don't know if it's our county offices, our R-TACs, S-TAC, who ensure that those implementation plans are posted on the LEA and preferably school websites, that would be helpful. I did some looking around on, online myself. And I have to tell you, I met with a challenge trying to find some of those plans. So if we can be sure going forward that they are posted in a way that it's easily found and accessible, that would be absolutely wonderful and aligned with the philosophy of the community schools partnership. Wonderful. So are there any other questions? Yes, Member Yoshimoto Towery.
Yeah, I just wanted to expand on what you said about the request for proposal and the evaluation aspect. This may have been said, but I just want to restate it clearly that I think the evaluation, if not in the current RFA, should also be looking at how the county offices feel their support is and what the supports are needed. Because we're a large state and we have a lot of county offices, coordinating county offices as well as the eight regions. And so I think it's important to capture the, the supports and needs across the system, up and down the system. And then lastly, can you, you mentioned Alameda County Office of Education as a state technical transformational assistance center. Can you elaborate on what the four Ls mean, the four leads? Because I understand that not only is it Alameda County Office of Ed, but there are four entities together that are a part of the S-TAC. And I think some of the comments that we heard from many of the speakers was revolving around shared decision-making. And so we're trying to model that at the state level as well as the regional R-TACs.
Yes. So the four partners, C F J, standing for Californians for Justice, N E A, and then, I'm blanking out. Of course, UCLA, University. So they are, Alameda is the recipient of, obviously, the contract. So they are the lead technical assistance center or transformative assistance center. They are meant to be, you know, equal partners in terms of sharing ideas and coming up with plans. So they have their, their own meetings. There are times that, issues that we want to, you know, bring with the S-TAC, they discuss in their meetings as well. They are meant to be four partners together. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask that the recommendation slide go back on the screen for us, please. And if our discussion has concluded, I'd like to ask for a motion. Member Yoshimoto Towery.
I move that we approve the California Community Schools Partnership Program Cohort Three Implementation Grant Awards.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Member Patilla Brownson has the second. Brooks, would you please call the roll call vote?
Member Yoshimoto Towery.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Patilla Brownson.
Yes.
Member Roscoe Gonzalez.
Yes.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Escobedo is away. President Darlene Hammond.
Yes.
Member Ayipun.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Pete. Thank you so much for the presentation. At this time, we are going to take a 10-minute break. We will reconvene at 10:50 promptly. At 10:50, we will reconvene. Thank you. Thank you, and welcome back. I'd like to reconvene the board and take up item three, which is the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress and the English Language Proficiency Assessments for California, approval of the 2023-24 apportionment rates and updates on program activities. The C D E recommends that the California State Board of Education approve the following. First, the per pupil apportionment rates for the 2023-24 school year contingent on the availability of an appropriation for this purpose for the CASP tests administered as part of the CASP system as provided in Table One of Attachment Two. Secondly, an approval for the per pupil apportionment rates for the 2023-24 school year, also contingent upon the availability of an appropriation for this purpose for the L-PAC tests administered as provided in Table Two of Attachment Two. This item will be presented by Mal Vang and Alicia Moreno Ramirez of the C D E. Mal, please begin.
Good morning, Chief Deputy Nicely, Chair Glover Woods, and our esteemed board members. I'm Mal Vang, Director of the Assessment Development and Administration Division at the California Department of Education. To assist me with this item, I will have Alicia Moreno Ramirez, the Director of the Multilingual Support Division, come up and co-present a little bit later. The item before you is an action and information item. As a side note, Cheryl Cotton, our Deputy Superintendent, could not be here. She is ill. So we, we are here to still deliver. Thank you. Today's presentation, we will cover an overview of the California Department of Education's recommendation, as well as our program updates. And then we will come back to revisit the C D E's recommendations and go over our assessment programs in between. I will begin by providing an overview of C D E's recommendation for approval. The C D E recommends, again, that the California Department of Education approve the per pupil apportionment rates for the 2023-24 school year contingent on the availability of an apportionment for this purpose for the CASP assessments that are administered as part of the CASP system as provided in Table One of Attachment Two. Also, the per pupil apportionment rates for the 23-24 school year contingent on the availability of an apportionment for this purpose for all the L-PAC tests administered as provided in Table Two of Attachment Two. So the proposed 2023-24 CASP and L-PAC apportionment rates are included on page three of the board item. The proposed rates overall have remained unchanged from the rates of, for the 22, 2022-23 school year. So pretty much this concludes the C D E's proposed apportionment rates for the 23-24 school year. And I will circle back with the recommendations at the end of the presentation. I will move forward in this next session are the assessment program updates. It's going to be a quick one, this one. We will provide some highlights on the professional learning opportunities for local educational agencies. And Alicia will come up and we will talk a little bit more about the transitional kindergarten's participation on the English Language Proficiency Assessment for California. First, just a brief update on what we are offering in the coming months to assist LEAs to better understand our state assessments and to use our state assessments. At this time, let's start with the California Educator Reporting System. We have, we also call this C E R S. So if you see the acronym, C E R S, C E R S, it's really the California Educator Reporting System. It provides teachers and educators, anyone who works in our public school systems, access to individual and aggregate student results of the CASP and L-PAC summative and the interim assessments too throughout the year. So to support our LEA staff, staff in learning how to access these summative assessments that are going to roll out this spring, we are offering a virtual training titled "Accessing Summative Assessment Results in the California Educator Reporting System." Oh, sorry, one more, one more bit of information for you. So these, there are two facilitated online modules. And this is focusing on a specific set of the summative assessments. So the first one, Module One, will focus on the L-PAC assessments and also the California Spanish Assessment. And that will occur on May 16th, 2024. The second module will be on the CASP assessments. And that includes all of your English Language Arts, Math, Science, all your alternates for the same content areas. And that will occur on May 23rd. Each module, again, covers how to access specific summative assessment results in our California Educator Reporting System. They'll be able to view and interpret individual score reports and understand the different features that are for each specific assessment. So another upcoming training opportunity for our local educational agency staff is the Interim Informative Assessment Training Series. And this training series is also an opportunity for teachers and, and other educators at the local level to learn how to leverage the interim assessment informative components of the California Assessment System to inform teaching and learning. So for the 24-25 school year, the series will begin in July and continue through September. And there will be three modules in this training series. Each will have a unique focus. Module One will focus on the purpose of the different types of assessments, including our formative assessment and resources, so that they could also use that along with the tools for teachers and how they work together to support learning. Module Two focuses on the English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, and L-PAC interim assessments and how they are used in the classroom. And then Module Three focuses on conducting or how to conduct hand scoring for those, for those same content areas, English, Math, Science, and the interims, L-PAC interims. And this training can really help educators to analyze interim assessment, written student responses, understand how, understand expectations, and determine next steps to support learning. So all these modules will be offered multiple times at these, as these modules are facilitated online training. Now we will, at this juncture, I will transition to the transitional kindergarten participation on the English Language Proficiency Assessments for California. I'd like to ask Alicia at this time to come up and join me in providing some updates on this topic. Just a reminder that at the March 2024 S B E meeting, the board members raised concerns about the developmental appropriateness of the L-PAC for our transitional kindergarten students. So to be responsive and in support of the board, the C D E plans to submit an informational memo to the board in June. And the goal of that memo is to provide relevant information on the current administration of the L-PAC to transitional kindergarten students and outline potential assessment and policy considerations for future deliberation by the S B E. We are, the C D E is seeking further input from the S B E regarding specific issues that should be included on the board memo and any additional information that the board members would like C D E to include, to address in that memo, to bring to you at a later date. Now I'll turn it over to Alicia, and she can share a few words.
Thank you, Mal. Good morning, Chief Deputy Nicely, President Darlene Hammond, Chair Glover Woods, and members. I'm Alicia Moreno Ramirez, and I'm the Director of the Multilingual Support Division here at the C D E. As interest in TK and L-PAC has surfaced from the S B E, education partners, and the legislature, the C D E team is working across divisions to address this issue, to ensure our youngest learners are not being over identified as English learners, and to ensure that all our multilingual learners receive the services they need. Mal's assessment team, my team in the Multilingual Support Division, and several other divisions at the C D E, including Early Education, that is represented here, and divisions involved in education data and reporting, are working collaboratively to fully understand the breadth of implications for English Language Proficiency Assessment and English learner identification of young children enrolled in transitional kindergarten. The C D E remains committed to understanding the affordances and opportunities of multilingual children and students. Today, the C D E requests input, pardon. Today, the C D E requests input from the S B E on questions of interest to inform the content of the forthcoming June informational memo mentioned by Dr. Vang, including areas to address. I would gladly take that input now, and we are happy also to field clarifying questions that you might have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, we are going to open the phone line for public comment. And again, just as a reminder, members of the public that are wishing to provide comment on this item may do so in person or by calling the telephone number and using the access code provided on the screen and slide shown before you. While we're waiting for members of the public to call in, I'd like to ask our liaison members, President Darlene Hammond and Member Roscoe Gonzalez, if they have any initial comments. Then I'll ask board members if they have a clarifying question before we go into public comment. And after public comment, we will go into board discussion. So at this time, we can begin with President Darlene Hammond, who is joining us remotely for liaison member comments.
Thank you so much. And thanks to Mal and the C D E team for bringing up not only the apportionment questions, but also the question about TK and the use of the L-PAC. I was really glad to see this item come to the agenda and appreciate the concern of the C D E staff. It is a matter of concern. Many of us saw an article in EdSource a while ago, which described how challenging and really traumatic trying to take the L-PAC was for TK students. And as we know, you know, it's just can be much less accurate than the observations of, of a teacher or other tools when students can't really engage in it productively. So we are really looking forward to the memo. And we've gotten a lot of useful input from stakeholders about the various options that may be available for us. And we'd love to have those evaluated. Many of you may know, there's also a bill in the Assembly, A B 2268, that would eliminate the use of the L-PAC for TK. And so I think more conducive alternatives that we are already using in preschool are certainly good options. A number of other states, you know, are also using different options for kindergarten that are less problematic than what we're hearing from the field may be the case with the L-PAC with respect to expectations for reading and writing. So I'm pleased that we are. So I'm pleased that we are undertaking some study and examination on this, look forward to the options that can be identified. We'll have more to say in the discussion section, I'm sure, and I look forward to us being able to continue to address this issue in the July board meeting.
Thank you, President Darling Hammond. Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Thank you, President Darling Hammond. I think you really hit it in the nail on the head about it being developmentally appropriate for TK. Being a second grade teacher and working with students of that younger early age, it's very difficult to test second graders who are able to sit and to be more attentive, and there is a lot of different assessments currently in place that would meet the needs to inform us of where TK students are in language. So I think continuing to explore that, those other avenues would be productive. I also want to both thank you both for your presentation. I want to commend the CDE's leadership for offering comprehensive virtual outreach activities and workshops. These efforts have been instrumental in enhancing accessibility and providing valuable support to educators, as myself, administrators, and stakeholders involved in these assessment programs. I want to also highlight that for those interested in further professional development opportunities, the CDE will be hosting a series of summer trainings and actually starting already now in May, which I think is great. These modular approach sessions are designed to provide educators with in-depth insights, tools related to assessment practices. Topics covered will include assessing summative assessment results, understanding data, features unique to different assessments, and leveraging interim informative components to inform teaching practices and learning. And these registrations will open soon, I believe, is what I, they're already open, I know for May. And so I think this could be further found in the CASP and ALPAC Training Opportunities website. So I really want to highlight that because as a teacher in the school side, I know when I'm meeting with leadership teams, we're planning our summer now. And I think having those available now and being open will be really useful for our educators on the field. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Orozco Gonzalez. Do we have any clarifying questions from the board before we go to public comment? Seeing none, we will now take up public comment. We encourage you, again, to please state your name and affiliation for the record. Please remember to turn down the speaker volume of your computers if you are following the live speed. Speakers will be limited to one minute each. Where speakers require interpretation, two minutes will be provided. Are there any speakers signed up to provide public comment in person?
We have one person signed up, Manuel Buenrostro.
Thank you.
Good morning, Manuel Buenrostro with Californians Together. And I just want to share our appreciation with staff at the California Department of Education for the continued engagement in these conversations to ensure that we find an appropriate assessment and alternative for how we assess our multilingual learners in transitional kindergarten. We understand that this is a constant conversation, and we're committed to continued engagement to make sure that we find a way to assess our students that is developmentally appropriate. We also appreciate that the department is going to be outlining a memo for districts as districts are gearing up for testing. This is going to be information that is critical for them and that is going to be very important for them as they consider next steps. And again, we're committed to continuing these conversations and appreciate the constant engagement in this critical issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone waiting to provide public comment on the phone line?
There are four callers in the queue. I will open the phone line now.
Thank you.
Caller with the last four digits, 2503, you are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Good morning. This is Cindy Livers on behalf of the Riverside County Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Edwin Gomez, regarding the ALPAC as it relates to transitional kindergarten students. Our county's educators believe the ALPAC is not an appropriate assessment for measuring language proficiency for incoming transitional kindergarten students. Many of our largest districts with high rates of EL students begin testing TK students over the summer months and have found it difficult to engage older three-year-olds and very young four-year-olds. Additionally, we believe testing will result in the misidentification of students as EL, potentially resulting in inappropriate supports and assessments. As you discuss options, we urge you to focus on the ways in which LEAs can use existing screeners to identify students. We believe this response alone would trigger the ALPAC of students in our kindergarten. If LEAs are able to use screeners, our county office will support our districts through monthly professional network meetings, bringing together educational leaders to collaborate and share best practices to meet the needs of our students. I thank you for the opportunity to comment. We look forward to participating in future discussions to determine how best to serve our TK students, and we're also looking forward to the update in June. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller with the last four digits, 9265. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Good morning, State Board Members. Carolyn Corlott on behalf of Early Edge California. We would like to thank the board for bringing this item of ALPAC administration to TK students for discussion and further analysis. California embarked on a bold mission to universalize access to pre-K programs for every four-year-old. However, this laudable policy has had the unintended consequence resulting in the issue before the board today. And while we work to find the right policy solution for our state, we believe it is critical to pause the assessments for our current TK population and even younger TK students who will be enrolled in California's Universal TK Program next school year. We would also like to raise the asset-based dual-language learner identification process that is being used in state preschool programs. This process has shown great success in identifying and supporting our DLO children. It is also an opportunity for building connections with families, sharing the importance of the home language, as well as tools for how to support their child's home language at home. And thank you for your work on this, and we look forward to our continued collaboration in this effort. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next caller with the last four digits, 8744. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Good morning, Dr. Darling Hammond and Board Members. Diane Abou on behalf of the Association of California School Administrators and the California County Superintendent. In our March 2024 course funds, our association's emphasis inclusion of TK students in the existing LP on the dashboard would not be appropriate. Given that the ALPAC was not designed for this age group, we are encouraged by this agreement of the CDE and SBE on this matter, and we are heartened to see the discussion on the developmental appropriateness of the assessment being facilitated by the assessment development and the Administration Division. As this dialogue progresses, we hope to be part of the ongoing discussion and have many experts in the field who are eager to provide input. In the meantime, as part of our May correspondence, we have provided some examples of tools commonly used in the field to develop the urging language development of our TK students, including the desired results developmental profile, the student or language observation matrix, and the family language instrument. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller with the last four digits, 8256. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Hello, this is Robert Mann, running for Children Now. I thank both the board members for raising this issue and for the CDE staff for really digging in on the details of ensuring the developmental appropriateness, especially as we bring younger and younger four-year-olds into the TK cohort. In particular, diving into the four domains, there may be some domains that are more appropriate than others, particularly the speaking and listening ones may be more appropriate, whereas reading and writing may be more problematic. And in this memo, if they could also provide information on how this relates to ESS requirements. So fortunately, we're not using the TK-to-K transition for our LP accountability purposes, and that's great, but really understanding the details of what is required by ESS as we test, whether we have to test these kids or not. Thank you so much. Look forward to the memo in June.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for item number three.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will open up for board discussion. Are there any board members that would like to make comments or ask questions at this Member Patilla Bronson.
I just want to start by thanking you for the presentation and also for bringing this forward as an item to dig into, I think, the number of speakers both who submitted letters as well as who called in or spoke in person have all sort of given voice to a shared concern that I've also, I think, heard from the department as well about wanting this to be an accurate process and one that ensures proper services to kids, but also that doesn't unintentionally do any harm. I'll flag a couple things that I would love to see sort of addressed in June. And so one is really just even to have a little bit of a descriptive baseline as part of the memo in terms of what we know about the accuracy, even of the sort of K administration of this. Some of the other states, I think, as benchmarks to look at how other states are looking at this to identify ELs, particularly in Illinois and Virginia, are some of the states I think that might be interesting and helpful to benchmark. But overall, I think the balancing of how do we ensure proper identification, not inadvertently back into over-identification, but making sure that kids get the services that they need are the big ones. I do have sort of a question just about sort of what the process and timeline looks like in terms of, so the memo will, I think, come and be posted in June. Does this come back to us as an item after the memo is put forward?
Of course, we could always do an update item. However, an informational item in future meetings, if that's what you should require, but that will provide some foundational knowledge in gathering your input about what you'd like to hear or see on that memo. We could start there, and I guess maybe the board chair could express whether if they liked for us to bring it to a future meeting, we could certainly do that. And we heard you about laying that as a foundational piece in the June memo, so I appreciate that. You know, I really wanted to share that in terms of just kind of addressing some of your concerns. When we did the, bring the TKers to take the ALPAC, it's a kindergarten program. So, and there were older children. It's that the program has changed, so everything else needs to change along with it, including the test. So at this point, there's no federal requirement to test TKs if it's a preschool program. So there's lots of options because of the transition.
I also just want to flag one item that I think is maybe something that will be a recurrent theme with TK. So TK is, in fact, a program that's designated for four-year-olds. But part, I think, of the opportunity with TK is to build in developmentally appropriate practices across the P3 continuum. So just looking for ways to sort of thread lessons learned as we look at this and have the memo come forward for thinking about how this could inform how we more broadly actually engage with the K-to-TK-to-3 continuum. Thanks.
Thank you. Other board member comments? Member Escobedo? And then I see President Darling Hammond remotely as well. President Darling Hammond, why don't you go ahead, and then we'll go to Member Escobedo.
Well, thank you, and I'm going to build on Member Patilla Bronson's comments about the pre-K through three continuum and how we can use this as an opportunity to take that up. There are both a number of options that, as she's noted, other states are taking up, particularly around the ways in which assessment looks at reading and writing. The states she mentioned do not try to evaluate reading and writing in the kindergarten, not to mention the pre-K space. There are a number of states that participate in a shared assessment called the WIDA, the W I D A, which would be another one to look at. There have been comments made, both in the EdSource article and from interest holders about the questions of the developmental appropriateness of the ALPAC for kindergartners as well, because we do include reading and writing. It is currently a part of it, and it has a small percentage value or weight, but it can still be challenging for young children, and they can shut down while taking the test or refuse to continue if they're being posed with things that are, you know, really not things they've been taught or expected to know. So I do look forward to like thinking about this, both with respect to our options for TK. A number of interest holders noted the desired results developmental profile, the DRDP, as one good option, the student oral language observation matrix, the family language instrument and interest tool. Those are all being used in pre-K, as well as I think we should look at these other options that are being used across the country in kindergarten and understand what our options may be and be able to take up an item in July so that we can use the benefit of the good research that our colleagues in CDE are going to do to figure out a path that will help build that pre-K through grade three developmental continuum that Member Patilla Bronson mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, President Darling Hammond. Member Escobedo?
I also would like to know what are other assessments that are being administered in TK, because I just wonder if some of those skills may be redundant across other assessments, and the time it takes, because I know many, some of these assessments are conducted one-on-one. I just want to make sure there's a balance between instruction and assessment. I think that's really, really critical. And also, in thinking of continuum, I mean, we created a great observation protocol for reclassification, OPTL. Is there a way to utilize that protocol from the onset and have a continuum? So I think that ability to create a connection to when students start in our system and end our system, I think, is very critical for overall cohesiveness with assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Escobedo. Member Yoshimoto Towery.
Yes, so in regard to TK and the memo, the June memo, I think explicitly it'd be nice to see the breakdown of students that are currently in different preschool programs, TK, state preschool, Head Start, other programs, maybe we don't know, but maybe unknown. And then the current assessments that are being used, many of them that have already been mentioned today and in some of the letters that we received. And if we have any other data, I'm visualizing like a chart to Board Member Escobedo's point, like the time it takes to administer, if the field guidance is clear, if there are any related instructional tools related to those assessments, I think it'd be helpful to know. And uses data for those various assessments. And then lastly, I'm just curious if there's any, I think I know the answer to this, but if there's been any research done, given that we currently have a variety of assessment tools in pre-K, any research that has been done looking at the predictive or correlative nature for then how students perform in kinder on the ALPAC? And if we've looked at that before, I'd be curious to see if there's anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there other board members that would like to make comments or ask questions? Yes, Member Orozco Gonzalez.
This is actually not about the transitional kinder, but more about opportunities that exist for others to participate in the developmental process, particularly those representing practitioners who will administer the screeners and utilize the results. So coming back to the screeners, what opportunities exist for, for instance, teachers, as myself, to apply and represent practitioners who administer and screen, since we're the ones in the field using these screeners?
So if you're talking about the preschool screeners, I may not be the best person to address that, but I don't know if our early education friends are here. Oh, there you are. Is that? Is that something you could address, Steve, or we could follow up if you don't have the information?
I phoned the break.
Good morning. Could I please hear the question again?
Yes, I'm referring to the Reading Difficulties Risk Screener Selection Panel. What opportunities exist for others to participate in the development process, particularly those representing practitioners who will administer the screeners and utilize the results? So, for instance, for practitioners on the field, how do they get selected and how do they maybe have voice in some of the screeners?
There was actually related work between... There was actually related work between an early identification tool and a screening panel, and it sounds like State Board staff is here to address that.
Good morning, Jessica Holmes of the State Board of Ed. We have an item coming up, Item 4, where we're going to talk a little bit more about the screener, so happy to talk more about it then. But we do have teachers who are serving on the Reading Difficulties Risk Screener Selection Panel that the board appointed in January, and we have many public meetings that we are currently engaged in. So, would encourage folks who would like to have a voice in that process to reach out through our monthly meeting process to participate and know that we do have educators who are serving on that panel.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Member Lewis?
Thank you both. Thank you all for your report and also to all the other CDE staff that participated in putting the report together. I hope I'm not redundant with Member Escobedo's question. Can you get me some more coffee? I had a brain fog. No, sorry. Had a brain fog. No. So, I hope I'm not redundant, but in one of the letters, and it's already been mentioned by President Darling-Hammond about some of the instruments that were used for preschool students and that some of those... One of the letters indicated that some of the preschool students may have participated in those programs. It would be interesting to see if we could identify those preschoolers that participated in the California preschool program that used those particular screeners that were mentioned in the letter, how well they did on the LPAC. And also, there's a question about there's a variance maybe between the amount of instruction that students... EL instruction that students might receive in various districts. So, it'd be interesting if we could do that comparison on how those kids who participated in those programs and in preschool, the screeners, and the... And how well they did on the LPAC in kindergarten, because maybe some of the follow-up, not sure, support that they received in preschool might have flowed over. It'd be interesting to see how well they did.
Sarah Neville-Morgan, Deputy Superintendent with CDE. Unfortunately, that is not data that we would be able to have. That's something that we should be looking towards in the future. We now will be collecting student identifiers in state preschool moving forward, but don't yet, so the ability to connect all of that is not there at this time.
And then it also... It's already been mentioned, my support for giving us information on some of those alternative measures that already exist that could be used in place of the LPAC, potentially.
Yes, that is something that we'll be able to provide.
Thank you, Member Lewis. I don't believe I see any other board members that have comments or questions, and I'd like to ask that we put up the recommendation slide as we prepare for a motion, and I will just add to the request of additional information, looking forward to that June memorandum. But also, in alignment with what President Darling-Hammond said a little earlier, it would be helpful to have an item on the agenda in July related to this as well. And looking to CDE staff and State Board of Education staff to work out what that item may need to look like, but would like to have something on the July agenda in relation to this as well. Thank you so much for hearing our comments, and thanks again to the public for calling in. I believe we have the recommendation slide in front of us. Again, the motion we're looking for really relates to the per pupil apportionment rate. We've had a very robust discussion of however that is where our motion would be aligned to. So, is there a motion on the floor?
I'm just... Go ahead.
Okay. All righty. Well, Member Orozco Gonzalez has moved that we approve the CDE recommendation for the per pupil apportionment rate, and I believe I saw... Member Rodriguez with the second. Brooks, would you please call the roll?
Member Yoshimoto Towery.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Patilla Bronson.
Yes.
Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Yes.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Escobedo.
Yes.
President Darling-Hammond.
Yes.
Member Ayapan.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Brooks. We're now going to take up Item 4, and just FYI, board members, after Item 4, it will be time for lunch. So, we are going to move to Item 4, which is the Reading Difficulties Risk Screener Selection Panel, Recommendation of the Review Process, Review Elements, and Evaluation Criteria and Rubric for Evaluating and Approving Screening Instruments. Member Yoshimoto Towery has recused herself from this item and has left the room. So, we will move forward with the CDE recommendation, which is that the State Board of Education approve the review process, elements, evaluation criteria, and rubric for evaluating and approving the screening instruments submitted pursuant to Education Code Section 53008. And we are happy to see that this item will be presented by Nancy... I can't pronounce anyone's last name today. I don't know why that is.
Brennelson.
Brennelson, and I know that, Nancy. I don't know where my problem is today. Thank you, Nancy Brennelson of the CDE, Dr. Young Suk Kim, Chair of the Panel, and Jessica Holmes of the State Board of Education staff. So, Nancy, again, my apologies, and please begin.
Thank you. Good morning, board members. It's my pleasure to introduce to you the individuals who will present the details on this item, Jessica Holmes from the State Board of Education, and also Dr. Young Suk Kim, who is the Chair of the Reading Difficulties Risk Screener Selection Panel. This has been a considerable effort on the part of the State Board, the CDE, and all of the panel members, and we're pleased that you have an opportunity to look at the review process, the evaluation criteria, and review elements, as well as the rubric that will be used by the panel to consider the screening instruments that will eventually be submitted. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jessica Holmes.
Good morning. As I mentioned, I am Jessica Holmes, Chief Deputy Executive Director at the State Board of Education. I'm here this morning to provide you all with a very brief overview of the timeline for the adoption of the screening instruments, as well as a review of the statutory charge of the board in adopting those instruments. Some of this is information that you already know. We've already had this similar item presented to you twice before, in January and in March. But just a reminder, the most important dates really here are that screening begins in the 25-26 school year. This is screening for risk of reading difficulties for all K through second graders. We've already appointed our panel, and that panel is hard at work. And today, we will be looking at the review process and evaluation criteria that the panel will be using to evaluate screening instruments that are submitted to the panel. So, in terms of the statutory charge related to the adoption of the review process, Education Code Section 53008B establishes that requirement and specifically requires the board to adopt a review process, including how screening instruments will be evaluated against criteria that are specified also within that section of statute. So, the way that the panel has interpreted this and is requesting that the board interpret this as well is to adopt three different... Or to approve three different documents that you will see as attachments to this item. The first is a review process, which is basically a timeline for how the panel will do its work. That is Attachment 1 to this item. The second is the Review Elements and Evaluation Criteria document that the board took up in March, at the March meeting, considered at the March meeting, that is informing the process for how applicant screening instruments will be scored. And the third is the rubric itself. This is Attachment 3B to this item. And all of these pieces are built off of Education Code Section 53008, and you will see hopefully very clearly how they flow into one another and inform one another. Because they are all pulled very closely from the statute, I did want to review very quickly the evaluation criteria that are specified in Subdivision G of 53008. I won't require you all to sit here and listen to me read these, but just to kind of give you an overall view of what these different criteria are. The first is the use of direct measurement supplemented by pupil data to determine risk. The second is measurements of domains that may predict dyslexia and other reading disorders, and there's a whole long list of examples of what that means. Evidence that the tool is normed and validated, especially important in this section, that using a contemporary multicultural and multilingual sample of pupils that reflect cities that we serve in California. Integration of relevant pupil demographic information, again, very important when representing the diversity of the students in our state. And then Guidance and Resources for Educators, on how to administer, interpret results, and provide those results to families. And I think very important in this section is that these guidance and resources are required to be aligned with our ELA/ELD framework and our California Dyslexia Guidelines, and that supports should reflect tiered interventions as identified in multi-tiered systems of support. So, as you can see, it's really intended to work cohesively with the rest of the priorities in our system around reading and supports. There was one additional section of code that I wanted to bring up to you today. This is the section that charges the panel to adopt the list of screening instruments on or before December 31st of this year. This is important because as you'll see in the Attachment 1, the review process, it really... We're backing up to that date to all the different things that the panel needs to accomplish. And I think the other important thing from this section of law, the panel is also required to identify information about the appropriate administration of each screening instrument. The panel has this built into the review process as one of the steps that they'll be taking, working on it this summer and this fall. And specifically, I wanted to call this out because it does align with some of the feedback we got in public comment for this item around providing LEAs with information about the screening instruments. That's certainly something that the panel plans to do. So, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our wonderful Chair, Dr. Young Suk Kim, who has been presiding over the work of the panel, and she's going to take you through the three documents that you're going to be looking at today to meet the charge of Education Code Section 53008B. Dr. Kim?
Thank you so much. Good morning. My name is Young Suk Kim. It's great to be here again. So, let me go over the three pieces. So, for the review process, please see the Attachment Number 1. And the review process was developed around the following priorities. The first one was to meet statutory requirements and also maximize applicant preparation time. We also considered maximizing panel review time, and that includes development of screener information summaries, and that Jessica mentioned. And of course, allows for an appeals process if that's necessary. The second item is the Review Elements and Evaluation Criteria, and for this, please see Attachment Number 2. The graphic or the figure that we have below, it just shows how each ones are related. So, the Review Elements document was directly informed by the Education Code Section 53008, and then based on that, Evaluation Criteria was developed. So, let me briefly go over the Review Elements and Evaluation Criteria. First off, let me briefly talk about the development process of these Review Elements and Evaluation Criteria by the panel. So, in the first February... First, I guess, the first meeting of panel, which was February, a draft review element was discussed, and that version was submitted or shared with the State Board of Education in March meeting, and I presented it here in March. And then, we got the feedback from board members, and in March panel meeting, those feedback was discussed, and also panel had further discussion, and that Review Elements and Evaluation Criteria document was further revised and approved. In March panel meeting, we also had a discussion of the draft rubric. In April panel meeting, the panel discussed and further revised the draft evaluation rubric document, and it was approved. The Review Elements document has three sections. The first section is Description of Assessment Battery. The second one is Psychometrics. The third one is Communication and Resources. In the first section, the first section has several subsections. The first one is Construction Rational, and this section, it needs to include a brief description of the constructs and skills that are included, and they were listed in the statute. And there should be a description of theoretical empirical rationale. And Section B is Description of Tasks that are included that are supposed to measure those constructs. And the third section is Interpretation and Appropriate Use of Those Students' Performance. And Student Performance Interpretation includes types of decision rules such as benchmark goals or risk levels, and that should consider student background, such as family background, language background, instructional background, et cetera. Psychometrics is about reliability and validity. So, in this section, we look for information about participants who... Individuals who participated in the collection of reliability and validity data, as well as information on reliability. So, when it comes to reliability, we look for different types of reliability estimates that are appropriate for different types of tasks for different subgroups of students. Validity, there are different types of validity, and we're looking for content construct and criterion validity information. The third section is Communication and Resources, and it has the following six points, and I'm not going to read all of them, so... But essentially, this section is about information for users, you know? There are resources for users such as teachers and school and district leaders, as well as are there adequate interfaces and data management system, and is there alignment with English Language Development Framework and California Dyslexia Guidelines, et cetera. So, informed by the Review Elements and Evaluation Criteria were proposed, and there are seven evaluation criteria. And I'm going to actually read each of them, because these are actually directly transferred into the rubric that we're going to briefly discuss, so let me go over each of them. The first evaluation criteria is the extent to which the screening instruments measure key constructs in a manner that is theoretically and empirically well-grounded and evaluated for each grade level and language represented. Second, the extent to which the mode of administration for the screening instruments are appropriate for the students being evaluated by grade level and student need. The third one is the extent to which the screening instruments offer well-grounded guidance for determining when a student has sufficient language proficiency for them to be appropriately used. Fourth, the extent to which the screening instruments have been shown to be reliable and valid for populations of students representative of the California student population. Fifth, the extent to which the screening instruments offer useful guidance, resources, and professional development for the administration, interpretation of data, and reporting of results for populations that represent the student demographics of California. Six, the extent to which the screening instruments offer educators and families useful guidance for next steps, including potential instructional responses based on students' performances. And the last one is the extent to which the screening instruments align with the California guidance in the ELA/ELD framework and the California Dyslexia Guidelines. So, lastly, it's Evaluation Rubric. So, Evaluation Rubric is the one the panel members are going to use to score application, and this is directly informed by the Evaluation Criteria that I just described. and this is directly informed by the evaluation criteria that I just described. And please see attachment 3B for all the details. Evaluation rubric has three sections that are aligned with three sections in the review elements documents, and they are description of assessment battery, psychometrics, and communication and resources. And each section has relevant evaluation criteria, the seven of them that I just shared with you. So the description of assessment battery corresponds to, includes evaluation criteria 1, 2, and 3. Psychometrics includes, has evaluation criterion 4, and communication and resources section includes evaluation criteria 5 and 6. And you may notice that evaluation criteria 7 is not under any of the three sections. It's because the section, evaluation criteria 7, which is alignment with ELA and ELD framework and Dyslexia Guidelines, it's embedded throughout these different subsections. Here's a brief overview of how the rubric is structured. So at the very top is review element. So the section, the first one is section description of assessment battery, and right underneath is evaluation criteria that belongs here. So as you can see here, the extent to which the screening instruments measure key construct, that was the first evaluation criterion in the evaluation criteria document. And then right underneath the I is evidence statement that supports that evaluation criteria. And each evidence statement is going to be evaluated in three levels. So you see that strong evidence, moderate evidence, and minimal evidence. So some applications in terms of in this particular aspect will get a score of a strong evidence or moderate evidence and minimal evidence. And then you may wonder about what are distinguishing features between these different evidence levels? And those are really, those focus on how thorough and the quality of evidence that are provided. So if you look at the example here, the strong evidence is there's a clear and compelling theoretical framework and evidence demonstrating the appropriateness of the construct contact measured, content measured by the instrument for determining risk of reading difficulties at each grade level. So the italicized part, clear and compelling, is distinguishing feature for strong evidence. But if you look at moderate evidence, there's reasonable and reasonable theoretical framework and some evidence demonstrating. Whereas if you look at minimal, there's an unconvincing theoretical framework or limited evidence. So you can see the content is, what we're looking for is the same, but the level of evidence is different. That's how we're going, the panel is going to evaluate. So here's the staff recommendation. To meet the requirements of Education Code Section 53008B, we recommend that the board approves the proposed reading difficulties risk screener selection panel review process. That's attachment one. Review elements and evaluation criteria, that's attachment number two, and the rubric, which is attachment number three. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kim. At this time, we will now open the phone line for the public comment queue. Again, members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item may do so in person or by calling the telephone number and using the access code provided on the slide that is shown now. While we're waiting for members of the public to call in, I would like to turn to President Darling-Hammon for initial comments, and then I will go to the board for clarifying questions. President Darling-Hammon?
Thank you, and I want to start by thanking Dr. Kim and Jessica Holmes and our amazing panel for the careful and intensive work that has been done. You're seeing the sort of surface of all the deep work that has gone on already just in these last few months. The panel has been meeting monthly. It will continue to do so. This is a hard-working group and very, very thoughtful. So I appreciate that we are at this point at this time and that we'll be able to be moving forward expeditiously on this really important agenda item. And I think we have a very thoughtful criteria at evaluation rubric. I also just want to note that there will be additional information yet to be scoped out for what will go to the field about each of the screeners that has been approved that will allow the field to know more about what the screener does, how it does it, what the basis is, what the services are, et cetera, so that districts can make valuable choices for their demographic, for their students, for their needs in their community. And so that's going to be extremely helpful as well. The panel is appointed for two years, and I anticipate that there will be the possibility that some screeners will want to add information or come back a second time around what needs to be examined with respect to their screener. So this will be a moving process over the next couple of years and perhaps beyond that. But we will be in a position, I think, with this excellent starting point to allow districts to choose their first screeners by next fall, a year from this fall, I should say. And thank you very much for all the work that's gone into that.
Thank you, President Darling-Hammon. Appreciate your comments. Are there any clarifying questions from the board before we go to public comment? Seeing none, we will now take up public comment. Again, please remember to state your name and your affiliation for the record. If you are calling in, please do remember to turn down the speaker volume of your computers if you're following live feed. And just a reminder, speakers are limited to one minute, and speakers requiring interpretation will have two minutes provided. Do we have any speakers signed up to provide public comment in person?
We have one speaker in the room, Manuel Buñrostró.
Thank you.
Hello again, Manuel Buñrostró with Californias Together. And I just want to emphasize two things. Number one, we want to show our appreciation and thank the department for the considerations and the elements and domains that include guidance and considerations for English learners and multilingual learners. Specifically, I just want to call out the integration and of the ELA-ELD framework, which continues to be a very important guidance piece across California for instruction in ELA and reading. And then also, I just want to elevate language that was submitted in the LCFF Equity Coalition letter that includes a recommendation to ensure that the measurement of domains includes measurements for both English and the home language for English learners, and also for students that might be in a dual-language program that might be receiving instruction and reading in another language, making sure that this measurement can include a measurement in that language as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on the phone?
There are two callers in the queue. I will open the phone line now. Caller with the last four digits, 1-890, you are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Thank you. Ellen Barger, Associate Superintendent, Santa Barbara County Education Office and Chair of FISC. The California County Superintendents have been and continue to be very supportive of the reading difficulty screener process, and we agree that early screening will increase the likelihood of student success in both languages. We value the expertise of the members of the RDR SSP and look to them to ensure the final list of selected screeners reflects the proposed criteria. Given the requirement that local education agencies must adopt one of these approved screeners by this time next year, six months after the release of the list, we'd like to emphasize what was just mentioned about the importance of the summary analysis for each approved screener upon completion of the vetting process. The clarity of each screener's functionalities, strengths, and limitations will be important for LEAs to choose and implement appropriate screeners for their students in schools. In terms of implementation, the FISC ELA-ELD Subcommittee is working with the CDE Literacy Co-Director.
Thank you, caller. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Next caller with the last four digits, 8256. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Hello, this is Robert Manarin again from Children Now. I just wanted to thank the board for taking this next step forward on the screening process and the development of these tools. Particularly, I want to echo the comments of my colleague at California's Together and the Equity Coalition, really wanting, as you develop these screening tools and the criteria for selecting them, thinking about our English learners and how to assess a child who might have some literacy skills in their home language and some in English, and how to balance those two out to come up with an overall assessment of a child's literacy needs. Particularly for more unique languages, we may be able to do this better in Spanish, but as we get to more languages that are perhaps less profitable for providers to provide off-the-shelf products for them, thinking about how we might be able to serve our English learner populations with more unique language challenges. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you very much. I'd now like to open up for board discussion on this item. Are there board members that would like to make comments or have any questions to ask? Yes, Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Kim and Jessica Holmes, for your presentation. I apologize for getting a little ahead of myself. I had integrated that question about practitioners being involved in the process, and I just want to come and revisit it because it's so important for practitioners to have voice when we select these screeners. So just thinking of the opportunities that exist for participation into the development process, particularly for us practitioners who administer these screeners, can you please address that question that I had earlier about how we can become more involved?
Thank you so much for the question. So very much value your question and very much agree with that. So there definitely technical information that we have to evaluate, but if you look at the section three, communication resources, is really about that practice part, and we have several members who are classroom, in the classroom and in the district, they have really informed and have provided really careful feedback on those aspects. So if you have any specific information that you're looking for, please let me know.
Thank you, Member Orozco Gonzalez. Are there other comments or questions? Member Oaken?
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight the fifth evaluation criteria, the extent to which the screening instruments offer useful guidance, resources, and professional development for the administration. Nope, that's not the right one. I'm doing such a nice job of reading, but it's not the one I want. The screening criteria I'm interested, I want to highlight was the one about providing information to families. Families are specifically named, I think it might be the sixth one. In any case, I really appreciate that it's, that families are named as one of the groups that we want to ensure that the screeners are thinking about in terms of communicating results to. That feels really important. And the, my understanding is that the students who are being screened, the oldest are second grade. Is that correct? So while it may not be for every young person, like, having information, let me put it differently. Okay, what I'm trying to say is that information about students' learning profile is equally important for all members of their team. So whether that's their teachers, their families, and themselves. And so I appreciate that that's part of the screening criteria, and I, I hope, it may not be part of the screening, but it's really a comment about implementation. I hope we're also thinking about how students are learning about the results of these assessments, how we're talking with them about why they're being assessed. And then specifically to the screening criteria, you know, it's one thing to provide information to families, but if that information is wrapped up in educational jargon and is not actually accessible to them, I'm not sure it really puts them on, it really includes them. And so again, this might be something about implementation, but I think it's an important point to be thinking about how we're really including the whole team as partners in this work. Thanks.
Thank you so much for the comment. I cannot agree with you more. It can be as good if, as the communication, right? So how it is used is as critical as how it's selected. So we paid a lot of attention to this area, and that's what a lot of our practitioner members really paid attention to it. And I, you know, wholly agree that if this is an ecosystem, it takes more than a village to support our students succeed in reading and writing development. So we definitely, if you, not here, but in the rubric, we have language such as access and accessibility, you know, to the information explicitly stated. So absolutely agree, and that's a really important part of our work. And information sheet that we're going to include, I will also, you know, the panel members are really enthusiastic and dedicated to that piece of information as well, and we're going to have deep discussion in line with the point that you just raised. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Orozco Gonzalez?
Dr. Kim, I have another question in regards also about the approved screener. So how can we ensure that the selected screeners are reasonably priced or include at least one free option to prevent imposing unfunded mandates on our LEAs? So I've been, I saw that in some of our correspondence, and I raised it as a concern.
That's an excellent question, and I'm not sure if I'm actually the right person to answer that question. Perhaps we can get back to that in the future, and I think I need to have some, I need to have some learning. I have some learning to do. Jessica's here to help.
So the statute, the statute related to the screener doesn't really talk about cost. However, the statute does talk about the need for a brief assessment and one that is easy to administer by educators. So in terms of the complexity, the language sort of speaks to the complexity, but not to the, to the cost. So I think that that is, I think the statute doesn't, doesn't really address that. However, I know that in listening to what the panel has been talking about, it's really important for the panel that these are accessible tools for LEAs. I don't know that they, that they necessarily have cost as being a part of their charge, but I know that they are wanting to make sure that the instruments are accessible for folks. The other thing that I would mention is that I know that the state budget is currently in process, and there is a proposal as part of that related to providing funding to LEAs for administering these screeners. I don't know where that's going to go, and of course, legislature will have to make decisions on that, but it is, it is a point of conversation that's happening at the state level right now.
Okay, that's good to hear that there might be some funding for it, because I would think that sometimes that might be another cost for our LEAs too, especially since we're mandating these screeners. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And we're going to go to our board members participating remotely, first starting with President Darling-Hammon and then Member McQuillan. President Darling-Hammon?
Thank you. I just wanted to note that as Jessica just said, there's, you know, statutory set of requirements, and the board will, in addition to the selection of the screeners, which is the responsibility of the panel, the board will have some guidance for the field in the administration and use of the screeners. I do think it will be very important around the communication that we consider whether there is some board guidance use that would be useful. Labeling students has a lot of effects beyond, you know, the, the use of whatever terms are used around risk factors, et cetera. We may not want to leave it up to each individual screener to decide exactly how this gets framed for families, for children, as well as for the adults who are educators in the system, without some consideration of how to understand without some consideration of how to understand the limitations of what an assessment tells you and the possibilities of what an assessment tells you. There is language in the law about how it's important that the screener be understood as a flag, not a diagnosis, that it lead to other analyses of what the child is bringing to the table and what they may need, that educators are involved in that along with families. And I think that may be a place where we're going to want to reinforce the appropriate use of the screener and the appropriate means for communicating in a way that is not detrimental or misunderstood.
Thank you, President Darling Hammond. We'll go to Member McQuillan and then Member Escobedo. Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yes, Member McQuillan.
Thank you, President Darling Hammond. That was helpful for me. But my question or concern that I'll be looking and listening for is under criteria number four, the extent to which the screening instruments have been shown to, to be reliable and valid for populations of students representative of California, California student population. I mean, I think of how diverse we are, you know, and then socioeconomics plays a big part in that also, you know, just let alone the tribal community with 120 different tribes across California and then all of our different languages spoken. I'll be listening for how we meet that criteria number four, to be reliable and valid. So anything you could say on that to help assure me on that, please? Thank you.
Member McQuillan, just a point of clarification. Was there a question that you would like for Dr. Kim to answer at this time, or were you making a statement of information you'd like to receive in the future?
Probably for the future. It's a pretty big question, but thank you.
Thank you, Member McQuillan. Are there other comments or questions from the board? Okay, I'm going to ask that we put up the recommendation slide. As we're doing that, again, just would like to say on, from, from my comments, I greatly appreciate the tight alignment of the evaluation criteria with the education code. It's very, very clear, and knowing that evaluation criteria informs the rubric that would be used. Again, very appreciative of that. I just would like to underscore comments that have been made, both from our public and the board, in ensuring that the list of approved screeners make sure that we don't misidentify students who have a language other than English as their primary language and those who have English language dialects as well. So again, looking forward to that. And one last little piece is around administration time. I know that is included in the criteria, and thinking back to a comment I believe Member Escobedo made at another item we spoke about, wanting to be sure as our, our teachers are utilizing the screeners, that administration time and administration of the screeners doesn't take too much time away from actual instruction. So having that information about the administration time in that summary of the final list of approved screeners will be important, and I'm sure the panel will take a good look at that as well in making their determination of the screeners that would be approved also. So thank you so much, Dr. Kim. And at this time, I would like to ask if there is a motion that would like to be made on this item. The staff recommendation is in front of you. Member Oaken?
A move that we accept the staff recommendation.
Thank you. A second, Member Lewis? Second, I told you it was a second. I was supposed to wait for you to tell me. I'm sorry. We can tell lunch is on the other end of this one here. Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Brooks, would you please call the roll?
With pleasure. Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Patilo Brownson.
Yes.
Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Yes.
Member Oaken.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Escobedo.
Yes.
President Darling Hammond.
Yes.
Member Ayapan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. At this time, we are going to take a break for lunch. We will reconvene at 12:50, and we'll be back to get started at that time. Thank you very much. Welcome back, everyone. Yes. I'd like to reconvene the board meeting and take up the regular consent items five through eight. So we're now going to open the phone line for the queue for public comment on consent items five through eight. So members of the public wishing to provide comment on consent items five through eight, you may do so in person or by calling the telephone number and using the access code on the slide that is now showing. Again, please remember to state your name and affiliation for the record, and also remember if you are following the live speed, to please turn down the speaker volume on your computers. And just as another reminder, speakers will be limited to one minute each, and speakers requiring interpretation will be provided two minutes. At this time, do we have any speakers that are signed up to provide public comment in person?
We do have two speakers that are signed up for in-person.
Thank you. And as the speakers come forward, just a very quick reminder that President Darling Hammond has had to step away from our meeting for the rest of the day, so we will continue with the business at hand. I just wanted to make sure that the board and the members of the public were aware of that. So now we will go forward with public comment in the room, and the first speaker may go. Thank you.
State Board of Education members, my name is Lorraine Richards. I'm a classroom teacher representing California Teachers Association. My comments are in reference to the billions of dollars in funding being proposed on consent agenda items seven and eight. The Edsource article from yesterday did a fantastic job of providing an overview of the many issues related to NCB funding determination process as outlined in the FICMAT LAO report. Within the 76 charters being funded in item seven, you can find the following. NCBs that are sending approximately $58 million out of state for profit companies such as K-12, Inc., with no competitive bidding. Last round, K-12, Inc. received approximately $56 million. Two NCBs on the list are a part of the FICMAT extraordinary audit report that was released late 2023. These schools are no longer organized under the Inspire Network. They are all still fiscal practices found within their forms that raise concerns. Thank you.
SBE members, my name is Angela Stiegel, and I'm also a classroom teacher representing the California Teachers Association. My comments will be in reference to the billion dollars in funding being proposed on the consent agenda items seven and eight. The FICMAT LAO report that was released earlier this year was required by the legislature to identify and make recommendations on potential improvements to the non-classroom-based funding determination processes, including recommendations for enhancing oversight and reducing fraud, waste, and abuse. Within the 30 charters being funded in item number eight, one NCB we believe would be of interest to the board and public is River Springs Charter. River Springs Charter states that their revenue for one year is over $118 million, with reserves of over $42 million. River Springs is being recommended for two years of funding at 100%, with mitigating circumstances, which would equal about $240 million, and this is only one of 30 NCBs within the item. Thank you.
And there are no callers in the queue, so that concludes public comment for items five through eight.
Thank you very much. Given that there is no further public comment, I will now ask for a motion on consent items five through eight. Do I have a motion?
I make motion that we approve.
Member Lewis, may I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Member Oaken. It's been moved and seconded. Brooks, would you please call the roll?
Member Yoshimoto Towery.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Patilo Brownson.
Yes.
Member Orozco Gonzalez.
No.
Member Oaken.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Escobedo.
Yes.
Member Ayapan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now take up item nine, which is the Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the 21st Century Act, Review and Approval of the Draft Updated Federal Perkins v. State Plan. The California Department of Education recommends that the State Board of Education approve the draft updated federal Perkins v. state plan. Is that five? Not the, thank you. Federal Perkins, I should know that. Federal Perkins V. State Plan, and send the plan to the governor's office for approval. This item will be presented by Pete Callis. Welcome back, Pete of the CDE. Pete, please begin.
Thank you. Again, thank you for having us here to present this item. We do recommend approval of the Perkins V. Updated State Plan for 2024 through 27. There is an attachment of the Perkins V. State Plan included with the item. So for Perkins V., just a brief overview. California started with a transition plan in 2019, going from Perkins IV to Perkins V. We submitted a four-year state plan covering 2020 through 2024. California Perkins V. State Plan for 2020 through 2024 was approved by the U.S. Department of Education in August of 2020. For California to receive our fiscal year 2024 Perkins Grant Award, CDE is required to submit one of the following pursuant to Section 122A5 of Perkins V. Option one is to submit a new four-year state plan for 2024 through 27, which would run through July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2028, including the budget for fiscal year 2024. Option two is a, is an annual revision to establish our SDPLs for fiscal year 2024 and a budget for fiscal year 2024. CDE is submitting under option two. In April of 2023, staff from the Office of Career Technical and Adult Education from the U.S. Department of Education conducted a monitoring review visit. CDE received a compliance finding during the OCTA visit under the Accountability Section of the review requiring an edit be made to the 2024-27 Perkins V. State Plan. The finding was that CDE failed to use a statutory definition of a secondary CTE concentrator pursuant to Section 312 of Perkins. The finding was that CDE had included as part of the definition, the 300-hour requirement for a pathway completer must be removed from the California Perkins State Plan. So we had a 300-hour requirement on top of the new definition that the U.S. Department of Ed had put in. We didn't have a definition for a completer prior to this Perkins V. So we had the 300 hours in our previous plans also. So update. The removal of the 300-hour requirement is not considered a substantial change to the state plan, so this is why we can use option two for fulfilling the requirement and the change to the plan. Option two required a public comment period, broad stakeholder engagement, and presentation to and approval by the State Board of Education, California Community College Board of Governors, and the governor's office. The CDE will submit to OCTA an action plan detailing the steps and timelines to achieve compliance with the statutory definition of a secondary CTE concentrator in its Perkins Accountability System. This definition should be used for Perkins data collection and reporting beginning no later than 2324. So corrective action, process, and timeline, CDE updated the language in the state plan and all websites pertaining to Perkins V. to reflect the two courses versus the 300-hour requirement for a pathway completion. This will be completed no later than June 1 of 2024, and we've already done that in the plan here, and we've already completed that on all of our webpages. So it's already done. So we had to do a public comment period. That was March 4 through April 7. We requested public comments, and based on the posting that we had on the webpage, we identified where the 300 hours were on each page in the plan for them to be able to review and find it concisely as we did for the, as we did with the attachment that we submitted with the item. We accepted public comment via email through pathwaytowork@cde.ca.gov, and they were required to include their name, their affiliation, and any public comment they wanted to make towards the edit that we had to make for the 300 hours. This is just a piece that was part of the public comment that we posted online, and it showed what pages it was on and the statements that were made on those pages. We also updated our indicators as we do each year, and this is just part of what we included in the public comment, but this is what we do each year is we update the indicators. During the 33-day public comment period, we received a total of 11 public comments via email. A majority of the public comments that were received stated that there's a concern about removing the 300 hours. Most comments around the removal of 300-hour requirement concentrated on the perception of devaluing, devaluing of the program. And that brings us to our recommendation for approval of the Perkins V. State Plan as updated.
Thank you very much. We will now open the phone line for public, for the public comment queue. Members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item may do so in person or by calling the telephone number and using the access code provided on the slide that is showing now. While we are waiting for members of the public to call in, I want to ask our liaison member, Member McQuillan, if he has any initial comments. Then, board, I will ask you for clarifying questions, and then we will go to public comment, and after that, we will have board discussion. So, Member McQuillan, any liaison member comments you would like to make?
Yes. I want to thank Pete for bringing this forward and all the good work done on this revision to the Perkins V. Plan. As of February, I'm now the Chair of the Committee on Workforce Pathways Joint Advisory Committee, and we heard this item also back in last month. The Joint Advisory Committee includes three members of our state board, as well as three members of the Board of Governors of the community colleges of California. Together, we make recommendations on career technical education. This version of the Perkins V. State Plan was presented and approved at our April 26, 2024, meeting. As you heard, the draft Perkins V. Plan makes changes to the definition of the CTE concentrator to align with the federal statutory definition. And as Pete outlined it, removing the 300-hour concentrator and going to the two-course sequence. But just want to point out, these resources that we send to our LEAs are very important to our future career technical education folks who will work on our computers that we take for granted, you know, our computer information systems, our electric vehicles, and healthcare industry. This area provides those resources for those very important areas for the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member McQuillan. Are there any members of the board that have clarifying questions they'd like to ask at this time? Seeing none, we will go to public comment. And again, for those who are making public comments, please remember to state your name and affiliation for the record. Also, remember to turn down the speaker volume if you are following us via live speed, and just a reminder, there is a one-minute allocation to speakers, and speakers requiring interpretation are going to be provided two minutes. Do we have any speakers signed up to provide public comment in person?
We do not.
Do we have anyone waiting to provide public comment on the phone line?
No, there are no callers in the queue.
Thank you very much. I'll now open the floor for board discussion. Is there any discussion, any comments from the board, or questions you would like to ask at this time? Member Yoshimoto Towery.
I was trying to provide some wait time. Thank you, Director Callis. I just wanted to make a comment, and this comes from someone whose team has submitted for many of these types of grants: Perkins, Golden State Pathways, Stronger Workforce, CTIG. I think the Governor Newsom's August announcement, his executive order on devising a master plan for career education for the state, it might be a great opportunity to possibly think about how we integrate more of this college and career readiness work, because I think that would be welcome for the field to think about, maybe. It's a lot of work to take five separate grants at five separate times to the board and have five different reporting structures and that type of thing. So, again, I really applaud the work, and it's really exciting that our students are, you know, we're continuing to move as a state towards college and career readiness for all of our students. But I just wanted to make a plug for seeing if this could be an opportunity to think about how do we consolidate some of this as a state plan.
Agreed.
Yeah. It's a comment. I don't know that you need to respond, but you're welcome to if you'd like to.
Thank you, Member Yoshimoto Towery. Are there any other comments? If not, if we can put the recommendation slide back up at this time, do we have a motion? Yes. Thank you. I believe so moved would work. Is it aligned to the recommendation? Okay, yes. And may I have a second? Okay, I think we see Member Ayapan, who had her hand for the second. Okay, thank you very much. It's been moved in second. Brooks, would you please call the roll?
Member Yoshimoto Towery.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Patilla Brownson.
Yes.
Member Roscoe Gonzalez.
Yes.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Escobedo.
Yes.
Member Ayapan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Pete.
You appreciate it.
Thank you. So we'll move on now to item 10. Item 10 is the California's application to the United States Department of Education for funds available through the 2024-29 Federal Charter Schools Program Grants to State Entities. Discussion and consideration of proposed content and submission. The CDE recommends that the State Board of Education approve and direct the CDE to apply for up to $93.8 million under the federal CSP for a five-year grant award period. The CDE also recommends that the State Board of Education direct the CDE in consultation with the Executive Director of the State Board of Education and/or State Board of Education liaisons to perform all necessary activities required to finalize California's CSP application. This item will be presented by Susan Park of the CDE. Good to see you, Susan. You may begin. So I'm sorry, Susan, I think we need your microphone on. Thank you.
Good. Okay. Good afternoon. Very excited to share with you a proposal that has taken blood, sweat, and tears from many divisions, conversations with our liaisons, the State Board staff, and the charter school division staff. So you're seeing a culmination of effort. We think we have put together a five-year package of a $93 million next-generation of charter school startup and replication and expansion grant funds. Allison was just, this is our grants director, Allison Ball. She was running downstairs because we just finished the federal webinar with the U.S. Department of Education. So she was literally taking notes to confirm California's eligibility. We are eligible. We're on the map. And the grant application period has opened. The application is due June 13. So we'll be spending the next 32 days working very hard on it. And so I'll take you through just the first slide, but I want to really give credit to our grant director to walk you through the nuts and bolts, and then we're happy to answer questions. So, we here in California, we call it the Public Charter Schools Grant Program, but technically, it's the Federal Charter Schools Program, CSP. So you'll hear us say that a lot, but in California, when we talk about it, we say PCSGP. It's intended to provide funding to plan and implement at brand-new charter schools. I call these the birth certificate charter schools. They've never existed, and we're required to use 90% of the grant award to fund new charter schools, replication charter schools, and those are charter schools that exist, but they want a twin. They have done a good job. They've met a high-quality metric, and now they want to replicate themselves into another school. And then the third category is our expansion. This is an existing school. They're not quite ready to replicate, but they would like to grow. And grow means two things. Either they're going to take their existing grade levels and grow the total enrollment, or they're K5, and maybe it's time to become a K8, or maybe it's time to become a K12. So it can be grade levels or total enrollment. And then the remainder of the grant allows us to use at least 7% for technical assistance. This is an area that we've been working hard to grow and expand support for authorizers and the importance of that. And then no more than 3% for the nuts and bolts, the monitoring, the desk review, the site visit. So I'm going to turn it over to Allison, and she will walk you through some of the history, the recommendation, as well as some details.
Thank you, Susan. As Susan said, I'm Allison Ball. I'm the project director for the CSP for California. And our recommendation is to direct the CDE to apply for up to $93.8 million in federal funds for a five-year grant award period. Additionally, this would involve the state board directing the CDE to work in consultation with the Executive Director of the State Board, State Board liaisons, to perform all necessary activities to finalize this application. We'll start with a summary of the 2020 CSP grant, which we're currently overseeing in its first no-cost extension. The 2020 grant was a $41.6 million award for a term of three years. This was in part because the CDE and state board foresaw that there were changes coming that may impact the charter landscape. This was a smaller pipeline than previous years. This was also a reduced timeline, a three-year grant. In that award pipeline were 60 proposed subgrant awards, and of those, the CDE ran five funding competitions and awarded 36 of the proposed subgrants to new replicating and expanding charter schools. That pipeline was impacted by factors that were anticipated, including legislative changes to charter school establishment and renewal criteria, and also the moratorium on non-classroom-based schools, but also unanticipated impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. Additionally, this grant included new opportunities for oversight and technical assistance, best practices going out to charter schools and authorizers. First, we had new opportunities under ARTAC. These were subgrants awarded for regional technical assistance and coaching to partner organizations like Chapman University, working in collaboration with Eldorado Charter Selpa, and a charter management organization, Navigator Schools. These subgrantees facilitated workshops and professional learning opportunities to support program improvement and best-practice workshops on topics like differentiating instruction, universal design for learning, and person-driven planning. Additionally, under the 2020 grant, California was awarded a competition priority point for states to disseminate best practices to all charter school authorizers, which the CDE implemented as the Charter Authorizer Support Initiative, or CASI. Through subgrants in collaboration with the Santa Clara County Office of Education and CCAP, the California Charter Authorizing Professionals, the CDE has launched CASI to provide statewide resources to increase the quality and consistency of charter authorizing and oversight. Over these past two years, CASI has exceeded our goal of reaching 50% of California's authorizers, with attendance by 59% of California's 328 charter authorizers, as well as districts and counties that may become authorizers in the future. And we are really glad to see that also charter school operators, nonprofit charter support organizations, and the general public also attend these events. These first two years of CASI have laid the groundwork for the 2024 CSP application as authorizer technical assistance has been escalated to an absolute priority, meaning that no state entity can be awarded this grant without demonstrating that it's already taken steps to provide best practices and technical assistance to all authorizers in the state. Moving on to the specific CSP application evaluation criteria, and confirmed in that webinar that we were just at, the grant application for 2024 remains largely the same. This was released by the U.S. Department of Education as of April 24, and these criteria are similar. They are criteria for the state's objectives, review of subgrant applicants, and plans to monitor and provide that technical assistance. The CDE, in collaboration with state board staff and liaisons, have developed what we believe is a framework for the 2024 grant, which we think is ambitious, but also based in data and aligned with the priorities of the state. Which brings us to the proposed application for a 24-29 application. This would be a total award of $93.8 million to fund 70 new replicating and expanding charter schools. As we fund each charter school for a total of a three-year period, the CDE recommends applying for the maximum five-year grant, which would allow multiple rounds of funding to be completed. The 2024 CSP continues to require technical assistance activities, and the CDE recommends to continue funding for both charter school technical assistance and charter school authorizer technical assistance. In terms of those subgrant options, those four funding types remain exactly the same as Susan described. Planning subgrants are for new startup charter schools that have an approved charter petition but have not yet begun operations, while those implementation subgrants are available for schools which have been open for less than two years. For existing schools, there's funding available for those that can demonstrate a track record of success. Replication awards are available for charter schools that are opening a new school. If they can show their existing school being replicated is high quality, and we'll look at those criteria in a couple of slides. Similarly, expansion awards are available only for schools that demonstrate that the school being expanded is high quality. In terms of funding levels for these subgrantees, the CDE recommends increasing base awards for new schools from $600,000 over a three-year period to $800,000 to reflect the higher costs of planning, establishing, and operating a charter school in 2024. Similarly, we recommend to increase base funding for expansion schools from $300,000 to $500,000. New for the 2024 grant is the proposal to include expanded supplemental funding based on charter school applicant meeting-specified criteria, and these criteria are designed to provide additional support for high-cost areas of charter school operations that are aligned with the goals of the state to support all learners and to encourage innovation, which really is at the heart of the Charter Schools Act. For example, supplemental funding is available for charter schools that have a partnership with a public university, school district, COE or Selpa, to improve student academic performance in an innovative way and to share best practices. Those high-quality criteria that we spoke about, these apply specifically to replication schools and expansion schools, and these remain largely the same as they are tied to federal criteria written in statute for this grant. In order to determine eligibility for those replication and expansion subgrantees, the CDE reviews high-quality criteria and data provided by the school. The first criteria to define strong academic results is similar to what's currently in operation in 2020. It's aligned with the AB 1505 Performance Data Category list to include all schools designated high-performing and a specific subset of middle-performing schools. For 2024, the CDE proposes to compare those charter schools' performance against the local district, as this data may be the most relevant for families when considering school choice. Additional criteria remain in place while a charter school must demonstrate that it has no significant issues in the areas of student safety, financial and operational management, or statutory or regulatory compliance. Additionally, final criteria have been added, and these are in order to meet the federal requirement that charter schools must demonstrate increasing academic achievement and graduation rates, if applicable, for all students and for each student group. The CDE proposes to utilize the LCAP for this review. We've included for you a summary of previous board action, as the state board has a history of supporting the development of this grant since 1995. And as you review those previous grant awards, please note that the grant term has varied in length from three to five years. In terms of fiscal analysis, if funded, this application will result in $84.4 million in local assistant funds over a five-year period for up to 70 subgrant awards. This funding request also includes approximately $9.4 million in funding for technical assistance activities and administrative oversight, which is how we reach that total of $93.8 million, which is our recommendation for the total grant award.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We will now open the phone line for the public comment queue, and members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item may do so in person or by calling the telephone number that is on the slide before you, using the participant access code that is there. While we're waiting for members of the public to call in, I would like to turn to Member Olken to provide initial comments before I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and for such a long and thoughtful process to get us here today. As you noted, we've met several times over the course of this to ensure that we're bringing a grant proposal forward that is going to get funded and that represents what we care about and value in the state. So I really appreciate your collaboration and support along the way. And then, just a couple of quick comments to frame this. You heard that what we're doing here today is approving, we're being asked to approve, we're being asked to give the approval to apply for this grant, and the grant application is due very soon, as you may have heard, June 13. And so while there's been a lot of work thus far, there's still a lot to go to get us over the finish line of actually writing the application. So I look forward to what happens in the next 32 days after we get through today. And I'll save any further questions or comments for later. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Olken, and I just first want to add in my appreciation for all of the hard work that has been done in trying to bring all of this criteria together so that the application can go forward in, would we say, June 13? So about 32 days, take away the weekends, not a whole lot of time left there, most definitely. But I just want to highlight a very important portion of this, which is that supplemental area that is really in place to encourage. Thank you so much, Susan, for flipping over to that.
Favorite slide.
I tell you, well, it is mine as well, because that supplemental funding to really emphasize innovation in supporting our students with disabilities, our English learners, our socioeconomically disadvantaged students, as well as encouraging CTE programs across the board. That collaboration and sharing of best practices, as was brought out, is so, so important. So I really appreciate having that included in a very genuine way in our application. And again, I realize again that time is looming. Time is looming before us, and I will save the rest of my comments for after our public comment and for board discussion. So thank you so very much. And at this time, I believe, we can go to the public comment area. God bless you. And what we will do is now open the phone line for a public comment, and if we can put that slide back up with the number, just a reminder for the members of the public that want to call in, please use that number and access code. And we'll also take public comment for those that are here in person in the room. So at this time, do we have any speakers signed up to provide public comment in person?
We do. Lorraine Richards, Kitty Alvarado, and Laura Kerr.
Thank you very much.
State Board of Education members, my name is Lorraine Richards, and I'm still a classroom teacher representing California Teacher Association. CTA supports the CDA's efforts to expand their bandwidth to provide oversight and authorizer support. Additionally, we recommend that the CDE shift the, excuse me, the CDE shift the Charter Authorizer Support Initiative to partner with additional county offices of education to support oversight and authorizers, and that the CDE expands its roles in their overall operation. CTA recommends that non-classroom-based charters be excluded from the grant program until that area and the law is fixed. There have been two reports released from FICMA- There have been two reports released from FICMA, LEO, and SEPCAP outlining wide-ranging concerns and issues with this portion of the industry with the State Comptroller's Office report still to come. Lastly, CTA recommends that the CDE, excuse me, the CDE apply for less funding overall charter school growth trajectory under AB 1505. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Katie Alvarado, and I am speaking on behalf of the California Charter School Association. CCSA strongly supports CDE's proposal to apply for additional federal funding for the public charter schools grant program. This program provides badly needed funding for outstanding charter school operators that are interested in expanding to serve additional students in need. There are many public school students in need of new, high-quality schools, and high-performing charter schools, charter public schools face many challenges and make it difficult to serve more students. PCSGP funding is one important way that the state can help charter schools meet these challenges. We thank CDE staff for their work in preparing the application and for federal funding and ask the board to support the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Laura Kerr with the Charter Center. Thanks to the staff and to the board for considering this application. We support it. We are, I've had the opportunity to work with charter school developers, and unfortunately, a lot of the need for technical support happens before the school is approved, before they're authorized, when they're trying to make a plan for how to work with educators in the community to serve students and raise student achievement. So we'd like to see more of the technical assistance be focused on those early developers, so as they're making choices in their charter petitions and operational plans, that they're not unintentionally or they're intentionally not qualifying for the grant. Also, we appreciate the focus on authorization, on authorizing and oversight. We think that's a critical part of the value proposition for students. Additional flexibility in exchange for accountability is what gets results in charter schools. However, we want to make sure that any authorizer initiatives that are funded with federal programs are fair and unbiased. And so, thank you, and good luck with your grant writing.
Do we have any other public comment in the room? Seeing none, do we have anyone waiting to provide public comment on the phone line?
No, there are no callers, so that concludes public comment for item number 10.
Thank you very much. I'll now open the floor for board discussion. Any members of the board that would like to speak to this item, ask questions, make Well, seeing none, can we put up the recommendation slide once again? And I'm going to ask, as we have here, I'm going to ask for a motion, but I would like to add a short little piece in there, and that's in regard to really being sure that we have opportunity to collaborate and work in the short timeline that we have. And again, I know everyone is trying to work under the lines of the feds and webinar just happening today, so there's not a whole lot of time there. But I am going to ask that we amend this motion a bit, and I'll let you know what the amendment is, so that we have a very tight timeline specified in the motion to be able to work through some of these things with that short 32-day timeframe. So I'm going to look for a point of clarification. Am I allowed to make a motion? Okay, just checking, just checking. New in the seat here, didn't know, can I do that? Alrighty then. Well, then I will. I move that we adopt the CDE recommendation, as we see there, to apply for the $93.8 million in federal funds for that five-year grant period, and also that working in consultation with the Executive Director of the State Board of Education and the liaisons to perform all necessary activities to finalize that. But I'd like to add in that, as part of this motion, to direct the CDE that by this coming Wednesday, which would be May 15th, to provide a plan, including timelines, for how the CDE will collaborate with the State Board of Education, staff, and liaisons to make sure that we have all necessary components of the application in place, and to be sure to provide that to the Executive Director of the State Board for their approval. Again, the only reason for that amendment, if you will, is to be sure that we're able to move along expeditiously and be able to meet that deadline that we have coming up, and I said 32 days minus weekends. So I hope my motion is clear on what I'm asking, and did that make, okay. So it has been moved. Do we have a second for that? Thank you, Member Lewis. It's been moved and seconded. At this time, Brooks, would you please call the roll?
Member Yoshimoto Towery.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Patilla Brownson.
Yes.
Member Roscoe Gonzalez.
Yes.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Escobedo.
Yes.
Member Yappan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Susan. Thank you so very much to both of you for all of that hard work, and the work continues, it continues, but thank you guys for leading this so great. She was like, wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. So we're going to move forward. I have here to give us a break, but we don't need a break. We just came back from lunch. So we're going to keep moving to the waiver consent calendar. So now I'd like to take up waiver consent items one through six, and we're going to open the phone line for the public comment queue. Again, please remember to state your name and affiliation for the record, and the waiver item and district name to which you are speaking. Please remember, again, if you're following us via the live feed, to turn down the speaker volume on your computers when you call in. Speakers, again, you have one minute each, and if you need interpretation, two minutes will be provided. Do we have any speakers signed up to provide public comment in person? I'm going to take the silence as a no. In person?
I believe they're checking their voting.
Thank you. While we're checking, we can see, do we have any members of the public waiting to provide comment on the phone line?
We do not.
We do not? Okay. You can let me know if we are going to close the, no. Okay? Thank you. So there is no public comment on this. I will ask for a motion on consent items waivers one through six. May I have a motion, please? Okay. Member Rodriguez has moved. Okay, Member Roscoe Gonzalez has given the second. Brooks, can you please call the roll?
Member Yoshimoto Towery.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Patilla Brownson.
Yes.
Member Roscoe Gonzalez.
Yes.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Escobedo.
Yes.
Member Yappan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to waiver item seven. This is the request by Sacramento City Unified School District under the authority of California Education Code Sections 46206 and 47612.6 to waive Education Code Sections 46207 and 47612.5C, the audit penalties for offering insufficient instructional minutes during the 2021-22 school year at Sacramento City Unified School District's non-charter schools and four of its charter schools, and the Education Code Sections 46208 and 41420, the audit penalties for offering insufficient instructional days during the 2021-22 school year at Sacramento City Unified School District's non-charter schools. The California Department recommendation finds that the request meets the requirements of Ed Code Sections 46206 and 47612.6, and therefore recommends that the State Board of Education approve the request as long as the conditions outlined in Attachment 1 are met by the district. If these conditions are not met, the penalties will be reinstated, and CDE will take action to recover the penalty amounts from the district. This item is going to be presented by Elizabeth, pronounce your last name for me. Dear Stein, thank you very much, of the CDE. Elizabeth, please begin.
Good afternoon, Vice President Glover Woods, Chief Deputy Nicely, and fellow members of the board. My name is Elizabeth Dearstein. I'm the Director for the School Fiscal Services Division here at CDE. I am here today to present to you the staff recommendation request from Sacramento City Unified School District to waive $39.7 million instructional time penalty it has incurred for the fiscal year 2122. Statute permits the board to waive an instructional time penalty if a local educational agency provides instructional time equal to the amount lost and in addition to the amount otherwise prescribed for twice the number of years that it failed to maintain the prescribed minimum at the affected school sites. CDE has reviewed the waiver request and finds it meets the conditions necessary for the board to approve the requests, which are outlined in Attachment 1 of the item. Sacramento City Unified's bargaining units have been consulted and are in support of the waiver, and based on this information, the department recommends approval of the waiver on the condition that Sacramento City Unified follows through on its plan to offer the required additional amount of time at all 70 district schools and four of its charter schools in school years 2425 and 2526, and that compliance is verified by their independent auditor during the annual audit for those years. If Sacramento City Unified or its charter schools fail to meet the conditions of the approval, the penalty will be reinstated, and CDE will take action to recover the penalty For context, instructional time requirements are checked annually during the independent audit performed by the LEA's auditor. If requirements are not met, the auditor will issue an audit finding, and the associated penalty is calculated in accordance with a statutory formula. The LEA may pay the penalty back in a lump sum or through a repayment plan under certain conditions, or the LEA may obtain state board approval to waive the penalty amount provided it makes up twice the amount of time lost over two subsequent school years. The board has considered 103 instructional time penalty waiver requests since 2007, and the only denial occurred in 2011 based on the LEA's failure to meet the conditions of a previous instructional time waiver. In March of 2022, during the 2122 school year, there was an eight-day closure impacting all of Sacramento City Unified's operated schools serving TK through grades 12 due to a teacher strike. Because of this, the district failed to offer the minimum amount of instructional time required by law, and as a condition of approval, the district proposes to offer additional instructional time required in statute at the start of the school year for 2425 and 2526. The department has received copies of the proposed school calendars for those years, which reflect the additional instructional days. Because charter schools are local educational agencies themselves, the instructional time penalties are calculated separately for school districts and charter schools, but in all cases, the shortfall for the total annual instructional minutes for each grade level ranged from a loss of 1,600 minutes in TK in kindergarten to just over 2,900 minutes in grades nine through 12. The total penalty assessed for Sacramento City Unified was $39.1 million, and the total penalty assessed for the charter schools ranges from $57,000 to $336,000, as shown on this slide, and the variation is due to the number of students served by the charter school and the grade levels. As stated previously, CDE finds the request meets the statutory requirements and recommends approval of the waiver request submitted by the district on the condition they offer the required additional instructional time as specified on Attachment 1, and I am available for questions at the appropriate time, and there are also representatives from the district here.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. At this time, we're going to go to public comment, and then we will go into board discussion. So we'll now open the phone line for the public comment queue. Members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item may do so in person or by calling the phone number that you see on the screen before you using that access code. Please don't forget to state your name and affiliation for the record and to turn down the volume of your speaker if you're following us via the live feed. And just a reminder, if you haven't remembered so already, you have one minute if you're speaking, and two minutes will be provided if you require interpretation. Do we have any members of the public signed up to provide public comment in person?
Yes, we do. Angela Stegall and Leilani Aguinaldo.
Thank you. You may begin at this time.
Good afternoon, Leilani Aguinaldo, on behalf of the Sacramento City Unified School District. First of all, a sincere thank you to Alex Moose and Elizabeth Dearstein and the rest of the CDE team for working so closely with the district so that we could ensure that the waiver request could be heard before you today. I'm here to urge the board on behalf of the district to support the district's waiver request so that we can ensure that the approximate $40 million that Elizabeth just described can be invested in district classrooms. We're also pleased to share that since we submitted the waiver request, the district has also received agreement with UPE, our Teamsters Classified Supervisors, and our local Teamsters as well, to help make sure that the waiver request, if supported here today, is able to be implemented in the district. And as Elizabeth mentioned, we also have Conti McCarron, our Chief of Human Relations, Janay Marking, our CBO, and Amanda Goldman, our Director of Innovations, who helps with our charter schools, who are also part of the waiver request today. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Nikki Malevsky. I'm President of the Sacramento City Teachers Association, and I am happy to report that the new leadership of Sacramento City Unified and the Teachers Association worked closely and collaboratively to create the plan that formulates this waiver, and we would request that you approve it today, and we also want to give our thanks to the CDE staff that was very helpful in making sure that we met all the requirements. Thank you.
Good afternoon, SBE. I'm still Angela Stegall. I still represent CTA. We appreciate the CDE's time and their hard work on this waiver, and CTA supports the waiver, and we recommend the SBE approve it. Thank you.
Do we have any more in-person comments? Thank you. Do we have anyone waiting to provide public comment on the phone line?
There are two callers in the queue. I will open the phone line now.
Thank you.
Caller with the last four digits, 2492, you are now live. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Anna Molanda-Herman, and I'm a parent in Sacramento City Unified. I'm also one of the founders of the Sacramento City Caregiver and Parents Union that was formed during the pandemic because the district failed to help students and parents during the pandemic. I want to correct one thing. I did submit a written comment earlier today, but I got my ears wrong, which should tell you how hard the pandemic impacted all of us. I'm asking today for you to look at subdivision D. I believe Sacramento City Unified is one of the school districts that would be allowed that exemption on a subdivision D. If you refuse to do that, then I ask for conditions where you move it one more year. This is incredibly upsetting and disruptive to all the families in the district to have it start this fall. We ask that the days be mandated that they're for social-emotional learning. That is what's the problem in our district. It's not that the teachers aren't teaching the material, it's that our students aren't showing up ready to learn. Let's use this as an opportunity to show our kids that we care about them again, and let's make these days truly planned.
Thank you. Your time is up. Next caller with the last four digits, 7441. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Buckles, and I am a parent with two young children in SCUSD, and I am here to ask the board to deny the district's waiver. Shortly after returning to school in person following the COVID pandemic, the union went on strike, teachers went on strike and created eight days of learning loss for my children, including a lot of emotional turmoil and stress for families across the district. Now, two years later, the district and the union are seeking to burden, once again, students by making them attend an additional 16 days of school. There will be no actual learning recovery for students who are now more than two years removed from the date of the strike. I also received information from the district that the cost of operating for 16 days is $34.47 million. That likely does not include any projected cost of pension and retirement benefits. Therefore, the difference between the cost of operating for 16 days and the penalty is less than $5 million. When you spread that across our district of over 40,000 students, the math simply does not equate to any. does not equate to any meaningful learning recovery.
Thank you, caller. Your time is up. That concludes public comment for waiver item seven.
Thank you very much. We will now open for board discussion, and Board Member Lewis, would you like to make any initial comments?
Yes, I would. Thank you. First of all, thank you to everyone in person who's made comments on this agenda item, and thank you for the two parents who also called in. Just a couple of points I want to make to the Board is that, first of all, as Elizabeth mentioned in her presentation, there have been 103 of these waivers that have been brought to the Board before. So this is really a standard waiver that's before us today, and the requirements for this waiver is set forth in statute. And the reason that we're hearing this particular item today is because of the magnitude of the amount of money that this district would stand to lose if this waiver is not approved. And it involves a waiver of over $40 million for a penalty for eight days missed in the 2122 school year, and it impacts 80-plus school sites within the district. And within the statute, it specifies that the time has to be made up in two years in a row, two consecutive years. And based on the CDE's recommendation, the district has presented information that it shows that it will do exactly that over the next two years. And just keep in mind, without approval of this waiver, it would stand to lose $40 million. And as challenging as the budgeting environment is right now, even without that, this penalty could really impact the students in the district. So if I could, Vice President, I would like to open up with a couple of questions that maybe the district could answer for us. There was a concern with one of the callers about whether or not the Board has the discretion to move this waiver forward another year without starting, in other words, without starting in the 2425 school year. So we were, the SBE was not presented with a waiver application that provided alternative timelines. So what we need to remember as you think about comments you want to make, questions you want to ask, we can only act on the waiver that's presented to us today. We do not have the discretion to alter it in any way, so we cannot change the timelines. So the time of the year that the dates were added to the district's calendar was the product of a lengthy negotiation between the district, the teachers' union, and other unions that were mentioned today by one of the speakers, in-house speakers. And those calendars with the additional dates were ultimately approved by the district at the district's board meeting. So if we could, I would like for the representative for the district, first of all, to kind of explain your process. How did you get to this point today? What steps were taken with your school community? And also, if the CBO could answer the question regarding what would a $40 million penalty, how would that really impact the students and staff within your district?
Thank you. My name is Concy McCarron, and I'm the Chief Human Resource Officer for the Sacramento City Unified School District. Thank you for hearing our item today. To answer the question, I want to just agree, it was a lengthy process. We were engaged in negotiations for a couple of years, I think most specifically since August of '23. We concluded those negotiations in January, where we were able to reach this deal to add additional instructional days for our students. And that was the focus for both parties, and we were pleased to get there.
What did you have a process for, so the latest you, sorry, the concerns about moving the time forward? How have you engaged your parents? Talk about that process.
Yes. While recognizing that moving a timeline forward, as the district has actually tried in the past to move the dates up, is a difficult one. And while we understand the desire for more time, what we ultimately reached, because the significance of the loss to the students is so significant, having eight days, being able to get that instructional time back for the students as quickly as possible within the 2425, 2526 year, is what we ultimately came up with. In terms of having a public session meeting around it, we did not do that.
Thank you, Member Lewis. I do have a couple of questions as well. I understand that we need to ensure, again, as Member Lewis said, that those days are placed in the instructional years that are outlined. And so for this coming year, the 2425 school year, is there any consideration for, or all right, let me rephrase my question. Who made, who makes the determination on where those eight days are going to go for the 2425 school year?
That was the subject of our negotiations. We considered multiple different scenarios on how that would look, and throughout the negotiations process, we came to the agreement that this was in the best interest of the district in terms of moving forward. And as you heard, that was approved by our Board earlier, to have the days at the beginning of each school year to allow our students that additional start and to get access as quickly as possible.
And thank you. So my question, Elizabeth, to you is, as it relates to Attachment 1, which is what we're being asked to consider in our approval of the waiver, is there anything specified in Attachment 1 that those days have to be placed any particular, in any particular location on the instructional calendar?
No.
Okay. So that's a decision that's made at the local level with the school district and its educational partners?
It's to their discretion. As long as the eight days are in that school year, we're fine.
Wherever they put it. Okay. Thank you very much, Elizabeth. And so one last question for the district. Could you just recount for me again, I think you may have spoken to this, how the community and parents were involved in that decision on the placement of the days of the instructional calendar? I know you mentioned, again, I understand the district negotiations with all of the labor partners and how essential that is, but could you just recount for us again how the parents and the community were able to provide feedback to that as well, if they were, if they were?
Certainly. As I mentioned, while we didn't hold a specific session or forum, the parents and the community did have an opportunity at our board meeting when we took this forward with the recommendation to approve, of course, given the agreements that we negotiated with SCTA, the Sacramento City Teachers Association. And so at that board meeting, there was an opportunity to hear, as there is here during public comment, any comments before the Board made their decision.
Thank you. Yes, other Board member comments? Member Escobedo, please go ahead.
Before negotiations, the survey wasn't sent out to parents or, just really, really curious about the engagement with parents on these days. I'm hearing that the only time you were able to hear parents communicate was during a board meeting.
Basically, while there were communications, given the negotiations, as was mentioned, the strike took place in the 2122 school year, and since that time, the district and the union were attempting, hopefully in that year, to be able to get something closer here. That just wasn't the case. There wasn't an agreement able to be reached, so it's been an ongoing conversation. But yes, when we presented this final package, was at the board meeting.
Other Board member comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you so very much for answering those questions, and I do just have to say that I realize what's in front of us to make and take an action on, most definitely, and we will take a look at that motion in just a moment. I am a little concerned about the lack of opportunity for parents and community to provide feedback to the instructional calendar that is to start this coming school year. That just does seem to be a little bit concerning, but again, those are things that you will handle and work out at the local level. It's not anything that's within the purview of this Board, but I do understand that if days are placed at the beginning of an instructional calendar that's going to start in two to three months, that that might be some community concern, as we have heard. But thank you very much for taking the time to come before us, and thank you very much for answering our questions. Oh, I'm sorry. We have one, we have one more. Member Lewis, please go ahead.
The second question was, if you could just share with the Board what a $40 million impact could have on your district if this is not waived?
If it is not waived?
Not waived.
It's a significant impact. As you well know, education is one of the greatest endeavors we have to empower our young people with opportunities, and I don't think anyone in this room would disagree with the comment that, frankly, it's an under-resourced endeavor already, and we put every single dollar to work for our students every single day because it's that important. And not having $40 million for our students makes a significant impact in the opportunities we can provide, in the staffing we can provide, in the supplies, the curriculum. All of those things go into what we purchase, procure, and pay for every day, and so not having those dollars and being able to put them to work for students absolutely puts us at a deficit, just in the nature of our everyday operation.
Thank you.
Member Escobedo?
As a follow-up to that question, the expense of an additional 16 days doesn't exceed the $40 million, does it? Or is it, I just wonder what that, the increased expenditure would look like if you add those days, 16 days?
It really is almost a net zero impact. The $40 million is just a little above the estimated cost of those days. You know, we have to pay staff members who aren't otherwise scheduled for those days. Several 10-month staff members are certificated, nutrition services, bus drivers, those types we need to pay for additional utilities. We're going to be running the air conditioner during one of the hottest periods of the year, additional supplies, extra, all those things. But it is almost very close, a net zero, between the cost of the 16 days and the penalty.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the Board? Okay. Seeing none, can we please put up the recommendation slide again? And at this time, I'd like to ask if we have a motion on this item. Member Lewis?
Yes. I so move that...
Can you turn your microphone on, Member Lewis? I'm sorry.
Be scoot up a little.
Thank you.
Thank you. That we approve the Sac City Unified School District's request to waive the instructional time penalties for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. It has been moved and seconded? Yes.
Excuse me. I'd also like to remind you that we...
Yes.
...that we approved the request, but we also approved it with the waiver conditions that are mentioned. I can be a little...
Okay. Thank you very much. That motion has been amended. May I have a second?
It still stands.
Thank you very much. It has been moved and seconded. I don't believe we have any further, there is discussion. Yes, member Bolton?
Just a clarifying question, and I'm sorry for bringing this up at this point, but just looking at the wording of the, of the motion, that does include the four charter schools as well? Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we do have a motion on the floor. It has been moved and seconded. Brooks, would you please call the roll?
Member Yoshimoto Towery.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Patilla Brownson.
Yes.
Member Roscoe Gonzalez.
Yes.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Escobedo.
No.
Member Yapan.
Stane.
Member, motion carries.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Elizabeth, for the presentation. So at this time, we are now getting ready to reopen item one, to take action on the preliminary report of actions, draft of the March 2024 meeting minutes, the SBE screening committee recommendations for the appointments to the California Practitioners Advisory Group, and to report on our liaison assignments. So first, we're going to take up the draft preliminary report of actions and minutes for the March 2024 meeting. I'll now open the phone line for public comment. Again, members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item, you may do so by calling the telephone number, using the access code that I'm sure will be before you. There we go. Or making those comments in person. Please remember to state your name, turn down the speaker volume on your computer. You have one minute. So do we have any public comment in the room?
We have none.
Do we have anyone waiting on the phone line to provide public comment?
We do not.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion from a Board member to approve the March 2024 State Board of Education Draft Preliminary Report Action of Action/Muting Minutes? May I have a motion? Thank you, Member Patilla Brownson, and may I have a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Member Yoshimoto Towery. It's been moved and seconded. Brooks, would you call the roll?
Member Yoshimoto Towery.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Patilla Brownson.
Yes.
Member Roscoe Gonzalez.
Yes.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Escobedo.
Yes.
Member Yapan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And we're now going to go forward on, regarding the appointments to the California Practitioners Advisory Group. And as Chair of the SBE Screening Committee, I'm going to present the committee's recommendations for the appointments to CPAG. And just wanted to let the Board know that the Screening Committee was able to review applications for a couple of the CPAG open positions, and we conducted a paper screening and interviews, and would like to present to you our recommendations for approval. So the SBE Screening Committee is recommending the following individuals to be appointed to CPAG for the terms I specify. First, we have Corey Greenlaw. He's an Assistant Superintendent at Fresno County Superintendent of Schools. He will be representing superintendents or other administrators for the term of May 8, 2024 through December 31, 2026. Our second recommendation is Brad Ramos. He is a career and technical educator out of Morongo Unified School District, representing career and technical educators, and he also would be for the term of May 8, 2024 and December 31, through December 31, 2026. And then we have Holly Letterly, who is also a career and technical educator from the Carmel Unified School District. She also would be representing career and technical educators, and that is for the term May 8, 2024 through December 31, 2025. The Screening Committee is also recommending that we have, that we appoint a CPAG member, let me rephrase that, the Screening Committee recommends that the following current CPAG member be appointed Vice Chair, and that is Senor Roddy Bonchoi. He's superintendent at Winters Joint USD, representing superintendents or other administrators. That would be for the term of May 8, 2024 through December 31, 2025. So at this time, we're going to open the phone line for public comment. And do we have any public comment? Should I continue to read all of that good stuff? Members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item, you can do so by calling the number and using that access code there on the screen. Please remember to turn down your speakers if you're following us via live feed. And remember, there'll be one minute and two minutes if interpretation is required. Do we have any ones signed up for in-person public comment?
No, we do not.
Do we have any members of the public wishing to provide comment on the phone?
No, we do not.
Okay. So do we have any board discussion on this recommendation from the Screening Committee? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the Screening Committee recommendations?
It's moved.
Thank you, Member Rodriguez. May I have a second? Thank you, Member Rodriguez. May I have a second? Thank you, Member Escobedo. Brooks, would you please call the roll?
Member Yoshimoto Towery.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Patilla Brownson.
Yes.
Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Yes.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Vice President Clever Woods.
Yes.
Member Escobedo.
Yes.
Member Ayapan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Brooks. We're now going to move on to our liaison reports and provide our SBE members an opportunity to report out on their liaison activities that are not related to any items that were on today's agenda. And so we are going to go in the order of the roll call. So if you remember what order you were in when Brooks has been calling the roll, you'll know what order you'll be in to give your liaison report. And so we will start with Member Yoshimoto Towery.
He's been keeping me on my toes all day.
Reverse order there.
Okay, I have three of these on roles to report on today. The first is Advisory Commission for Special Education. And by June 30, we will be receiving, the board, State Board will be receiving an update on the template for high-quality, a new IEP template for the high-quality IEP project. And so I do think we have some members here that have been involved in that. And so we can look forward to that. And the goal of the new IEP template is really to ensure meaningful participation in the IEP process. Also, the Advisory Commission, just briefly, there are really good presentations in the Advisory Commission for Special Education. So if you ever have a moment to take a look at the recordings, I would recommend it. There was guidance issued on alternative pathways for diploma, a presentation from the Early Childhood Special Education Network this past meeting, and also ongoing presentations from our SLPA leaders and the system improvement leads work. One noteworthy presentation also I wanted to call attention to is the Office of Youth and Community Restoration spoke. It's a newly created office that was created in 2022, when the Department of Juvenile Justice was decommissioned. And they are creating opportunities for our youth in the juvenile justice carceral system to receive supports, community resources, be in the least restrictive environment, and also look forward to college and career readiness and gain full employment. The second item is our Regional EL meeting, which I had an opportunity to go to in person this past month. And Dr. Escobedo and I shared that liaison duty. And I just wanted to say, I thought the meeting on this May meeting was a great representation of the statewide system of support working well. We have county office supports from all of the different regions around English Learner, the English Learner Network. And the Imperial County SLPA came to present on the needs of multilingual students with disabilities. So it showed cross-system conversations and support. And the camaraderie and professionalism in the room is exceptional. So I wanted to thank all of the teams for that. And again, focusing on the uptal, looking at what that professional development and rollout is going to be for districts and district personnel, educators, teachers, and really getting good feedback on how to make that the best possible. And then finally, for civic learning, the Civic Learning Awards is an award co-sponsored by our Superintendent Tony Thurman, as well as Chief Justice Patricia Guerrero. And 21 of our California schools from eight counties received the Civic Learning Awards distinction this year, that they're celebrating their civic learning efforts. And I also want to congratulate, tentatively, 11 schools are LEAs that were awarded the California serves program grant, anywhere from $325,000 to half a million dollars, to implement a program that will help 12th graders earn their state seal of civic engagement. So both California serves and the Civic Learning Awards, those are online if you're interested in learning more. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Rodriguez.
Yes, hello, everyone. First, the Commission approved the Teacher Supply Report, the Commission and CTC, Commission for Teacher Credentialing, sorry, for transmission to the legislature. Unfortunately, the 2022-23 year marked the second year we have seen a decrease in new credentials issued and an increase in teaching permits issued. We know teachers are the single most important factor for student achievement. Retaining our current workforce while enticing others to become teachers in this post-pandemic world is critically important. On a better note, Commission staff presented an item on residency programs, funded by the legislature to prepare educators and counselors through clinically rich experiences in schools while they complete CTC-accredited programs. The number of residents enrolled in grant-funded programs was at its highest in 2223. And the resident demographics better match statewide student demographics than other preparation pathways. Plus, employment and retention rates are high, thanks to Weststead Program Evaluation Data. The Commission is also seeking an educator-preparation student liaison. So if you know someone, members of the board, CDE, board staff, or members of the public, somebody who is enrolled in a teacher prep program, please let them know of this incredible opportunity. It's incredibly helpful to have a voice from the educator candidates enrolled in programs informing the work of the Commission. Applications are due July 12. Finally, April was the last meeting CTC hosted in its location on 1900 Capitol. This month, the agency is moving to the May Lee State Office Complex in the Rayleigh Yards area north of downtown. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rodriguez. Member Patilla Brownson.
So after a year-long process of hearing from parents, providers, experts, child development leaders, the Universal Pre-K Mixed Delivery Quality and Access Work Group has delivered its final report and recommendations to the legislature and the governor just last month. The charge of that group was to focus on increasing access to high-quality universal pre-k programs for three- and four-year-old children through a mixed delivery model, meaning the K-12 system, as well as community-based providers, and to align with the master plan for early learning and care. There were many recommendations that came out of it, but I will highlight a few that relate more squarely to LEAs. So there is a set of recommendations around supporting better connections and coordination across UPK programs and TK-12 infrastructure in particular, and this references back to our earlier conversation around articulation with the birth-to-third-grade trajectory. There was a recommendation around how to, or rather, how to analyze the TK enrollment process as to what is difficult for parents to navigate and share best practices with LEAs for how to build awareness, streamline the process for enrollment, and minimize burdens on families. There was also a recommendation around encouraging community schools, which we also heard about earlier today, that serve elementary school grades to expand high-quality UPK through a mixed delivery model, either offering services through school district employees or through partnerships with CBOs. And then the last recommendation, which I think touches the board's work, is guidance on how the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, ELOP, could be used to provide full-day programming for TK students who could either have see a California State Preschool Program or Head Start Services round out what is oftentimes a half-day program of TK to make sure that it is a full day of programming. I want to thank the superintendent, I'm looking at you, Mary, and thinking of you, and also of Tony Thurman, of course, and Deputy Superintendent Sarah Neville Morgan, who was here earlier, for leading this charge. And then I'm just going to note, as I often do in May, that it is the 70th anniversary of the Brown versus the Board of Ed decision this year. We think of it oftentimes as something that happened somewhere far away, but I'll note two California touch points, one being Sylvia Mendez, who challenged the constitutionality of school segregation for Hispanic children in Santa Ana, and then also Melba Patillo Beal, who shares, with whom I share a namesake, who is one of the Little Rock Nine, who is a resident now in the Bay Area. So many, many touch points to civil rights history throughout California, and to note that it is living history still. That concludes my report.
Thank you so very much. Now we will hear from Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Well, thank you so much. My assessment liaison report was thoroughly discussed in Item 3. Today, I already provided a comprehensive update on all pertinent matters when it comes to assessment. But on May the 4, I had the privilege of attending the 2024 California School Recognition Program, which was where several outstanding schools from across the state were honored. It was inspiring to be amongst 1,200 teachers and educators who gathered to celebrate excellence in education in a magical place, Disneyland, of course. The ceremony recognized distinguished schools and exemplary dual enrollment award schools, national blue ribbon schools, civic learning award schools for both the 2023 and 2024 cohorts. This event highlights the dedication and hard work of educators, administrators, and students in fostering a culture of academic excellence and innovation in our schools. And I was incredibly proud of the remarkable work happening every day to shape the future of education, seeing all the students performing, and especially in the arts, just, I'm in awe of them and really applaud them. And I sat with the MACI Intermediate Team, part of the Monabela Unified School District, receiving this award. So I was touched and glad to be part of a Monabela team, which is my school district. And lastly, I want to, on Teacher Appreciation Day, I missed my luncheon today to be here with all of you as a second-grade teacher, but really excited to express my deep gratitude, admiration for all the incredible teachers out there. Your tireless dedication and empathy and love for teaching inspires us all. Thank you for being the guiding lights in our lives and shaping the brighter futures of every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to Member Olken.
Thank you. I'm glad I get to go after you, to appreciate you. Yep. And I do as well for our classroom teachers on the board. Yeah, the best. So I have a few things to report on. And I thought sort of the theme of my report is local and, I guess, global. So the first, as I, almost every meeting, I report on the work I do as the Liaison for Environmental Literacy and Climate Change. And so I wanted to start at the big level, which is in late April, there was the first ever, I'm going to get the name of it correct, the White House held its first-ever Summit for Sustainable and Healthy K-12 School Buildings and Grounds. And while that isn't directly our work here on this board, it is our work as educators and people who care about young people, recognizing that the work to ensure that everything about kids' experience and everything about our industry, education, supports our world today and into the future, is, it's nice to see that that's gaining traction all around. So that's the first. And then second, really more directly related to our work in California, the environmental, they all have such long acronyms, which I refuse to use, the Climate Change and Environmental Justice Program, which is the program I report about, where we are in the state developing interdisciplinary curriculum units at each grade level that help, that bring our students into the work of understanding the link between environmental justice, climate change, and what they're studying and honestly, their local community. Those units are coming along. They are now, many of them out in field testing. They're starting to do pilots. And that, they're just really incredible thoughtful units that are coming together. And then also related to environmental literacy recently, another acronym, this one, the acronym is ECLIPSE, which I really like, but it's actually the Environmental and Climate Change Literacy Project, which is a joint project of the CSUs and UCs, their teacher education programs. They brought together 500 participants for a virtual symposium, talking about how to teach environmental literacy and help our incoming teachers bring this important work forward in the classroom. And so we're really talking about the link between the curriculum units that we're building in the state and what pre-service teachers can learn and bring forward. So that's the environmental literacy hat. But then, another really fun hat I wear is related to artificial intelligence in schools. And so I just wanted to point out that we, a few meetings back, we had a presentation from CDE staff about the really forward-thinking work that's going on in California. We're one of only eight states that have already issued guidelines related to AI in schools. And though many more states looking at our guidelines and other resources are starting to come on board with that, and in April, a, there was a, the huge collaborative called Teach AI, which is a collaboration of 40 state education agencies and many other groups who are involved in education, technology, policy, put out a set of information briefs and a toolkit to support the effective, safe, and responsible use of AI in schools. And among the pieces in that toolkit are things that range from understanding the AI policy landscape in schools, both in the country and abroad, understanding why AI is important in education and in the workplace, some foundational policy ideas related to AI. And then probably my favorite is the information brief that went and talked to teachers and students about their perceptions and their thoughts about AI. And just to give a couple examples, 62% of students are concerned about the security and privacy of their data. And 72% of students said that guidance on how to respond, have responsibly used generative AI for schoolwork and within-school rules would be helpful. So we are hearing from students that it is on their minds. I could go on about what the guidelines say, but we've already had a report on that. And then last, but not least, Allison tried to steal my thunder, but I serve on the statewide IEP template task force, which is working to bring, put together a proposed IEP template that would be one that everyone in the state would use or could use. We have been working for a long time on it. And we will have, that group is due to have the final draft of the proposal submitted to the State Board by June 30. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Olken. We will now go to, we will now go remotely to Member McQuillan. Member McQuillan, you are up.
All right. Thank you. Mine may not be as interesting, but maybe so. We'll see. As you may or may not know, I've served as the SBE Liaison for the Statewide Model Curriculum Coordinating Council for the past two years. Today, I'm happy to announce that Anya, our student board member, has recently joined the council and will offer a powerful student voice to the ongoing reviews of this curricula. So today, we'll give a joint update on the council. As you remember, the council consists of representatives from the California Department of Education, us from the SBE members, the Instructional Quality Commission, and the California Collaborative for Educational Excellence make up the committee. The purpose of the council is to review the development of four-model curricula in line with the needs of K-12 students and teachers. The curricula involves Native American Studies, the Mongue History and Cultural Studies, Cambodia American History and Heritage, and the Vietnamese-American Refugee Experience. Have to say, very interesting stuff. I'm learning so much, and it's way overdue for us to have curriculum like this, you know, considering after the Vietnam conflict. know, considering after the Vietnam conflict and what these communities have been through, the Southeast Asian communities over the past 50 years. From the council meetings, we last met in February to hear updates and provide feedback on the draft curricula that's under development. Our next meeting is May 13th next week. It'll be Anya's first meeting. And, you know, there's a lot of draft lessons in there, a whole lot. I mean, I'm spending lots of hours looking at it, really fascinating, interesting about these cultures. We're heading down the homestretch for the Southeast Asian curriculum that'll be released this fall, and then the Native American Studies curriculum will be released the fall of 2025. Pretty interesting stuff. But I'll turn it over to our student board member, if she wants to add to this about the platform that this curriculum will be presented from.
Member Ayapan, would you like to do that now or wait until your report?
I can wait until my report.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, we will do that. We will definitely do that. So we'll move on to Member Lewis.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the Instructional Quality Commission, of which I am one of the liaisons along with Vice President Glover Woods, we met in January, and a recap of that meeting was given in March. So our next meeting is next week on May the 16th, and so I'll just give you a glimpse into that agenda for next week. It's online, and if you'd like to look at it, and it lists three informational items that the CDE will present to the commissioners during that meeting. The first presentation will focus on the California Arts Education Framework implementation, and it will provide the commissioners with an overview of how the IQC's work prior, IQC's prior work on the 2020 California Arts Education Framework has had lasting impacts and now has a renewed interest since the passage of Proposition 28. Some takeaways from the presentation will include framework-aligned resources for Prop 28 implementation and understanding the full life and utility of a curriculum framework. The second presentation will focus on the clearinghouse for specialized media and technology. Commissioners will receive an overview of the services that CSMT provides to all California's blind and low-vision students. This includes an overview of the American Printing House for the Blind Federal Quota Program that CSMT manages for all of California. And lastly, there will be a presentation focusing on media literacy. The CDE staff will provide foundational information on what media literacy is, as well as what they're already doing to address the importance of media literacy in K-12 settings, including media literacy's current presence in the Model School Library standards and the 2014 ELA-ELD framework. The presentation will also address the implementation of recent policy that involves the IQC, including but not limited to AB 873, which requires the IQC to consider incorporating the Model Library standards into the ELA-ELD framework and media literacy content in the ELA-ELD, mathematics, science, and history, social science curriculum frameworks when they are next revised. All IQC meetings are open to the public, get you some popcorn, watch the next meeting. The recordings are posted on the, they're very interesting, I don't mean to say that cavalierly. The IQC public meetings and agendas are on the CDE website. I'm also a liaison to the California Subject Matter Project, and our next meeting will be on May 21st and 22nd, first, 22nd and 23rd. 22nd being the, an ethnic studies convening in Davis, California, on the campus of UC Davis, and the CSMP Concurrents Committee meeting will take place the following day, also on UC Davis. And I'll give an update, and, well, Vice President Glover Woods and I will do an update for the IQC in our next meeting, and I will do an update for CSMP. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Lewis. Member Escobedo, you're next.
Thank you. It's always enjoyable being part of the screening and interview committee, you know, that, you know, Vice President Glover Woods, you do such a masterful job leading us, and this month, we, or last month, we did paper screening and interviews for CPAC, and it's always, always delightful, on all the very qualified and passionate people, we get to interview and review their paperwork, and just always find it an uplifting experience, truly do, and glad we got a couple people in place. So also, I'm part of the NASB Committee, the, by the way, just want to remind everyone, there is another conference happening in Kentucky, I believe it's in October. And this last session, we had the Deputy Assistant Secretary for the Office of Career Technical Adult Education with the United States Department of Education, his name is Luke Ryan, he gave a report to our NASB contingent. One of the things that he stated is the importance of CTE and how CTE, and they did an analysis by state, and by the way, we in California, we rank very high, and the only area where we don't do very well is in the data analysis aspect. I'm so happy Pete is really bolstering the data that we have in place. And one of the things he's seen nationally is when you do a comparison of completing college versus completing a technical vocational school, in four years, it's only like a 50%, you know, completion rate in higher ed, while it's close to 85% to 90%, you know, in CTE vocational schools. And then when you look at the financial implications, and we look at the trillion, over-trillion dollar of student debt versus, you know, get a job and have almost no debt after CTE vocational school, it's, it's almost, oh my goodness, if I had to do it over again, I think I would do both, but I would definitely consider vocational school. It's, so, I was like, I was pretty impressed with some of the data that Mr. Ryan shared. And by the way, Naomi Porter, who sat at your seat, Anya, is now interning for NASB. So, so it was, it was her first meeting a few weeks ago, and it was so great seeing her there, so, yes. That's amazing how our Californian student leaders are having a national impact, so. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that, and happy to know Naomi is still involved in the work, most definitely, how exciting. Member Ayapan, you're up.
Yeah, so in early April, I had a meeting to discuss outreach for the SBE student member application. The application for the 2526 student board member is live and can be found on the CDE website. It opened in late March and will close on September 20th. It's a pretty wide window, but if you've had a chance to see the application, it's pretty rigorous, so it gives potential applicants a chance to gather their recommendation letters, provide thoughtful responses to the questions, and it also gives us a chance to draw in as many applicants from across the state. We're currently working on finalizing an op-ed to attract more applicants, give them a little insight into what the role entails. And over the past month, I've already had students reach out to me via social media, via email, to inquire about the role, which has been so great to see that there is interest. And during that, during that meeting, we also discussed potential changes to the application in the future to make it more accessible to students, so I'm excited to see how we're going to keep, you know, revising this application process to just make it more accessible, as well as possibly coordinating panels with past SBE members to discuss their experiences and answer questions about the role, which would also be great to see. On another note, I'm thrilled to be joining Member McQuillan as a liaison to the Model Curriculum Coordinating Council and provide input on the ongoing drafts of the Native American model curriculum, model draft curriculum. I had an orientation in April where I got a rundown of all the terrific work that the council has been up to and already accomplished, as well as the work that remains. I had the chance to view the online hosting platform for the final curricula. This platform is currently under development by the California History Social Science Project and will include all the curricular resources and instructional supports organized by grade span, areas of study, themes, et cetera. So I'm looking forward to seeing how it's coming along when I attend my first council meeting next week.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you to all the board members for your liaison reports. I do have one for you as well. I'd like to give you a little bit of an update on the California Collaborative for Educational Excellence, more affectionately known as the CCEE. Just to let you know that there was a convening of the Community Engagement Initiative, PLLN, and that took place last month, April 25th through 26th, in the fine city of Ontario, California. Again, record numbers of people attending, over 500 participants, representing all categories, if you will, of educational partners throughout our state. There also is a resource guide that was released in February that has protocols and self-assessment tools. That resource guide is marking, it says, the achievement of a five-year milestone, and you can find that on the CaliforniaEngage.org website slash resources. A couple of other little things to share with you, CCEE released its third-quarter report on its website, you can find that, and in collaboration with state partners, just to give you some numbers, over 141 new resources have been developed for LEAs, and there have been over 750 partner engagements, convenings, and professional learnings. CCEE has also worked with over 185 partners, so it's really about working in collaboration with partners and agencies throughout our state to really serve our state from one end of the state to the other. The information, if you'd like to find out more, you can definitely go to the CCEE website and look under their initiative reporting tab for 2023-24. Lastly, I want to let you know that the third episode of the Rising from the Margins podcast, if you haven't listened to this podcast, you want to hear it, it's called Rising from the Margins, the third episode of that was released, and it showcases the journey, the inspiring journey, of Harkness Elementary in the Saxony Unified School District, who we had an opportunity to hear from today for a different type of item. So they have collaborated with the CCEE under the Intensive Assistance Model, and you can listen to that podcast if you go to the CCEE website and go to the podcast tab. So the CCEE stays very, very busy. The next meeting of the governing board for the CCEE will be held in June, I believe it is June 6th, and will be actually right here in this boardroom. So that concludes my liaison report as well, and I think we have done all of our liaison reports, so I would now like to take up Agenda Item 11, General Public Comment. So public comment is invited on any matter that is not included on the printed agenda. As we know, members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item may do so in person or by calling the number and using the access code you see on the slide in front of you. Please state your name and affiliation for the record, and remember to do what? Turn down that volume on your computer if you are following the live feed. Speakers will be limited to one minute each, and where speakers require interpretation, two minutes will be provided. Do we have any speakers signed up to provide public comment in person?
No, we do not.
Oh. Do we have anyone wishing to provide public comment on the phone?
No, we do not.
Oh. Well, hearing that there is no public comment, I hereby adjourn our May 2024 SBE meeting at 2:42 PM. Thank you, and we look forward to seeing you in our July meeting.